We call it 10-2 and I'd like to call to order the town council meeting for February 11. We can all stand for the political leaders.
The United States of America, in this republic where we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have our fourth item for proclamations and communications. I'm not sure if he quite tells the audience or if they want to give that.
We are going to hold off on the proclamations and presentations.
Can I just interject? So it will actually be a formal motion to table item four of the next agenda until later in meeting when the recipient and his family will be present to accept your vote. So we'll do that formal motion for that.
I would say.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, we are going to, we're gonna put this off until after 7:30 when John's whole family can be here. That gets us to public petitions, communications, and public participations on any subject in the jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. Just so you know, if you don't have the agenda in front of you, we have a public hearing tonight. And on our agenda, we have discussion on a potential cemetery regulation provision and then appointments to vacancies on the board. So if you have anything you want us to deal with in the new business, you can ask those questions now. Anybody care? Alright, no public petitions. That moves us on to number six, public hearing items, 6.1. Consideration of a resolution to approve a purchase and sale agreement between the town of Tallinn and Stephen D. Williams for the purchase of the parcel described as Wilbur Cross 22/K/020, 9.7 acres more or less, authorizing Michael Rosen, town manager, to sign the purchase and sale agreement.
So councillors, if I may sort of set the stage for this. Tonight's public hearing is regarding whether the council would like to approve a purchase and sale agreement with Stephen Williams to sell the Tallinn parcel described as Wilbur Cross. The purchase and sale agreement gets the process, oh sorry, sets the process, including the conditions of closing for this sale transaction to take place after all final approvals are met. There are provisions about what items are required to be delivered at closing and among other things, what rights the buyer would have to access the parcel to grade it prior to closing, subject to Planning and Zoning Commission approval. The Planning and Zoning did issue a favorable 8-24 review on the purchase and sale agreement back in September 2019. So per our town charter, disposition of real property owned by the town requires a public hearing and that's what we're doing tonight. Public hearings operate best when members of the public address the town council, sharing their opinions on the matter at hand within the town council's scope. In this case, that is the purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of Wilbur Cross. If there are questions asked by the public for clarification on the agreement, I'd recommend you keep a list of them and answer the relevant ones during deliberation portion of the agenda item to be considered as part of your reasoning prior to council's vote. Public hearings aren't generally back and forths, but just sharing to the record is the council's consideration prior to making a decision on tonight's matter.
So to kind of mirror what Mike just said, the purpose of a public hearing is to allow members of the public to come and speak about the topic on hand and for us to listen and weigh those opinions in our deliberation. Not a back and forth conversation or a question and answer period. With that in mind, if you ask questions, I will write them down and we will attempt to answer any of those questions in our deliberations after the public comment. Might be very clear that we will only be addressing questions that fall under the town council jurisdiction. That is all that we have. We will not be addressing any other questions or issues in regards to any other boards or commissions as they are government entities outside of this one. So with that, sorry, I forgot my.
Yeah, I give you a motion to open up the book here.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion to carry on.
Madam Chair, I'd like to find out if there's a lot of people waiting out in the hallway to be, if they can hear and be able to participate if they wanted to. Maybe we can help the chairs and the conference room.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if they're out there for John. It's like they're out here for this. So we do have a few more chairs that we can bring in. We've had this way before, we start, yeah.
Anybody else?
There's a seat right there in front.
All set.
We're all set.
Everybody else is further chief.
There's a spot right here too, if anybody needs a seat. Okay, so according to our rules of procedure, at this point, it's discussion of questions by the council and then conferences and questions by the public. So to start off, does anybody here have any questions in regards to this item right now? I think it's important to note, the last town council meeting that we had, there were a bunch of questions that were passed that I have answers to now. But before we get into those, I think, can we discuss Mike, the, I want to go over the letter of intent and what we currently have on the books for what was done over the summer with prior council and what options, what we're looking at specifically reviewing.
So a copy of the letter of intent is in today's packet, starting on page 18 of 39.
So with this, I think it's important to note that we do have a signed letter of intent with Mr. Williams already, correct, of that entire procedure?
Yes, and this version, I see Mr. Williams' signature is on page 20 and Steve Wurdener, the former town manager's signature, is also on page 20.
I don't know if we've already go over the questions that were already asked or just, we'll just take, do over the ones that we were asked last time and then we can open up for discussion.
I think that the main thing though was also the letter, we know that we've received the letters and that we've all gone over the letters that have been presented in relation to this and have taken all in consideration. We'll cover them, I think I want you to.
We have to put it in the book here.
Yeah, yeah.
So if we have any emails.
Well, we really only had, well, okay. So in the prior meeting, there were, there were a bunch of questions asked and I'm gonna go through those. Has the parcel been appraised? Uh huh, it has not been. Based on the Tallinn Wetlands Conveyance 8-24, abutters and others have the right to bid on the property. An 8-24 review was done by Planning and Zoning last September in compliance with the Plan of Conservation and Development and it was approved and recommended to the town council. In this case, the deed to the property from the state indicated this piece of property has to be used for economic development. The only land abutters that have access to the land for economic development is Mr. Williams. And the piece of property itself cannot be developed individually. So it has to be used in conjunction, in conjunction with the Williams property for development purposes. Should the town have put the property out to bid? The only purpose of a bid is to get the most amount of money for the land. In this case, the money is not staying with Tallinn and the state does not require us to go out to bid for this piece of property. Have the steps in the town charter and policies document been followed for the purpose of sale? The charter was followed. The dollar amount the land is being sold for is under the dollar amount that requires a referendum. The notice requirement in the charter was exceeded by the notice we are given here because of a heightened state statute of notice requirement. We followed the charter and then some in that case. What is the purpose of the proposed land and what is it going to be used for? The purchase and sale agreement states the property is for stormwater drainage and/or treatment facilities and/or open space and/or commercial development or other development approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The open space line in here is it is in open space as part of the development that supports economic development. It's not simply open space for conservation. Per the contract from the state of Connecticut, we cannot use it for open space for conservation. In that case, it would revert back to the, to the state. Conservation space, according to the state, is of no economic development value. The deed from the state restricts the use for economic development. The intent of the use has been that the town-owned parcel is used to support the development of 53 Merrow Road. Development on 53 Merrow Road and thus the town-owned parcel would have to be in accordance with the zoning regulations in effect when a development plan is submitted. What it's specifically, what it's used for specifically is outside our purview. The development needs a fully approved plan from all of the relevant authorities to be able to purchase the land. If he does not receive those approvals in the time period specified in the letter of intent and the property, then the letter of intent is dissolved. At any point, Mr. Williams could back out of the letter of intent, but the letter of intent on our side, we follow it through through the time period as long as he does all the stuff that he has to do and gets an approved plan, then the land would transfer to him, not until all of those things happen. In the letter of intent, it is noted the property shall not be accessed for Woodfield Drive unless required by PZC for emergency service. Number six, has the sale been submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission? Yes, the 8-24 review was submitted, reviewed, and approved. Has the conveyance been discussed by the Board of Finance? We do not have a Board of Finance. It has been discussed by the town council and approved last year with a letter of intent drawn up and signed. Does it have a budget line? No. Has the town council or auditor signed off on it? An auditor is not required and the town council signed off on the letter of intent last summer. Validity of the application before Inland Wetlands Commission. While the PSA is in question, this is not under the jurisdiction of the town council. Questions regarding the series of steps with public hearings before Planning and Zoning Commission and Wetlands Commission, again, that's not under the jurisdiction of the town council. Has the town council done its due diligence? The prior town council approved this and my belief is yes, they did. Is this the appropriate sale for the appropriate individual for what needs to be done? Has this been vetted? Mr. Williams is the only landowner that has access to this piece of land that can be developed for, and it has to be developed for economic purposes. So he's the only individual that can develop it for economic purposes. So was there an opportunity unless someone else developed? Again, Mr. Williams is the only landowner that has access to this piece of land that can develop it for economic development. We did then receive a memo from somebody else. I don't think, we don't want to read the whole thing in the record, do we? Do we just give it to them?
I don't know if we're required to because of, it's a public hearing.
You can, it's in the record once you look. Check the record sheet.
Okay, so I can summarize or you can summarize, whatever.
So we received a memo from a gentleman, but the memo that actually was sent was from someone called Margaret Minor, who was a consultant for Rivers Alliance in Connecticut, oh, for Matt Saxon, I'm sorry, and other interested persons. I write concerning the proposed conveyance of 9.7 acres of publicly-owned land leased around New York to a private individual for economic use. The original conveyance of this property to Tallinn was by DOT in 2003 as open space. Financial value for the property of the public, the property on 2003 was assessed by the Office of Fiscal Analysis at, I'm assuming that's $150,000 as open space. Obviously, it would be worth much more today, especially if available for economic development. I believe it should be reappraised before any decision is made regarding disposition. From a public policy perspective, this was a gift of land and water resources to the people of Tallinn, basically for conservation. If that gift is now to be conveyed to an individual for development, at least the public should be told the market value today of the 9.7 acres as commercial and industrial property. In fairness, I urge if the proposed land transfer goes forward, the recipient of the property reimbursed the public for its valuable benefit. Special Act 11-16, which amended the original Conveyance Act, Special Act 319, calls for revenue and any consideration upon a sale or lease the property to be transferred to the state. The town proposes to sell this property for $1 and therefore would only be obliged to return $1 to the people of Connecticut. The public, which includes residents of Tallinn, should be fairly compensated if the proposed conveyance is pursued. Requirements in Tallinn's town policies. Policy 3 outlines a series of prudent steps required before town real property can be conveyed. I'm not a lawyer, but I do not see anything in the state statutes that would require Tallinn to override these policies in this case. I'm not certain of which steps in Policy 3 may have been taken, but here they are. Declare the property as surplus, seek bids from abutting landowners, have a distinct value of the property, offer property to the community at large. If no reasonable offers are received, the town council may act in the best interest of the town. The process must be consistent with the provisions of the town charter. There are two sections of this policy that might raise questions relating to Special Act 11-16. As noted above, section three of the act says that any consideration from the sale must be transferred to the state. The town policy refers to putting the money into the town's general fund. Presumably, if that money is actually owed to the state, it would be transferred out of the town general fund to the state. If only a dollar is involved, this should not be a big issue, but I do believe that if the property is still for development, which I hope it is not, the public should get more than a dollar. Second, town policy number three does not apply to the sale of industrial park property. There is no industrial park on the property. The policy does not refer to property that might at some point become an industrial park. Ecological value of the property. The only current analysis that I have seen is the Re-Low report from December 18, 2019, prepared for Inland Wetlands and Water Forces Commission by George Logan. Mr. Logan frequently testifies the person's intent to develop a property. Reading his report, my reaction is OMG, no one should touch this place, three burnout pools. As an advisor, my more professional reaction is the property should be evaluated by an independent wetland scientist for its biological habitat functions and of course its hydraulic, hydrologic functions, hydrologic functions. You might also ask your conservation district for help. The original stipulation in the state's gift to Tallinn was that its property be used for open space. This was a sound and prudent condition in the public interest, given the high quality public trust water resources on site. Wetlands at risk, I am not commenting here on the application by the developer to the IWC, which involves grading and other radical treatment of the land and water. My experience is that wetlands and burnout pools are fragile and efforts to create substitute conditions almost never work, especially over time. If you are so lucky that the kids and adults in Tallinn have a place where they can see frogs and diverse life associated with this property. Conveyance Acts, every year, the Connecticut legislator passes one or more conveyance acts transferring state property to towns or individuals. In the past, some of these conveyances were clearly in the interest of the general public. As was apparent to the 2003 act conveying the 9.7 acres of open space to Tallinn, others not so much. Many questionable transactions took place with little or no public awareness. In 2018, the amendment to the state constitution reformed the conveyance act process to ensure more public awareness and opportunity to comment, especially on environmentally important problems. The town policy for land disposed is consistent with today's view of good governance by public land conveyance. In 2011, Conveyance Act is based on an outdated way to handle public lands and waters. It appears, however, that the Tallinn policies do protect the public interest as well or better than the process established for the state in 2018. As an advocate for healthy waters and diverse aquatic habitats, I hope Tallinn will follow the process and its policies and of course, I believe it would be in the public interest to retain the 9.7 acres as open space. Thank you for your attention, Margaret Milner, consultant, Rivers Alliance of Connecticut. In response to this, the land was not conveyed to Tallinn as open space. It was conveyed specifically for economic development. The financial value of the property to the public. This land was conveyed to the town for a purpose of economic development. Any money received are to be transferred to the state and there is no requirement in the special act that we go to bid only for any significant dollar amount for the property, only that it has to enhance economic development. I believe it was the prior council's belief that this would allow Steve Williams to develop his property adjacent to the parcel and the revenue to the town would be the financial benefit. In addition, if Steve Williams didn't buy it, no one else could use it for economic development. Therefore, he was the only choice. Number two, requirement in town policies. The policy that is quoted in that is for surplus land that the town does not need and provides a procedure to get most value for the parcel. Because of the requirements of this special act, that procedure is inadmissible. Ecological value of the property and wetlands at risk. Those are issues for the Inland Wetland Commission, not the council. And conveyance acts is a state issue, not a town issue. I think that answers all of the questions with that. All of the other questions that were presented at the prior meeting. With that, I open the floor.
Good evening. My name is Max Saxon from 75 with Woodfield Drive. I beg to differ. The original intent, I spoke to the Connecticut DOT and the original intent that it was given to the town of Tallinn was for open land space and then later released. Oh, I'm sorry, but that's actually incorrect. I have a letter to read. I'm a proctor for Mr. Christopher Cook tonight. I have copies, if you'd all like to see them.
Check that the mic's on, not very loud.
Yeah, if it really close up to the mic to hear it.
If it's on.
Get close to it, you can't really stand far away from it. You have to put it as close to him as you can.
Thank you.
So as I said, I'm a proctor for Mr. Christopher Cook, who couldn't be here and he's working. We as a community have the opportunity to create an environment that capitalizes on the logistics and aesthetics of the Tallinn community. When considering proximity to UConn, its growing international presence and the historic nature of the Tallinn Green, including the Tallinn Historic District Commission's petition of the Connecticut State DOT to designate as a scenic road much of Route 74 and part of Route 195 from the Town Green West and the town of Tallinn adopting a local scenic road ordinance by community. And that was quoted from page 21 of the Tallinn Plan of Conservation and Development adopted 10/12/2019. Tallinn could and should be viewed as a go-to spot for tourism and culture. This can be accomplished by prudent and needed economic development within established parameters, which Chris supports. Some resources are so important to environmental quality, public health, or character that alterations should be avoided to the extent feasible. These include a 100-year flood plan, steep slopes, groundwater 20% and water closes, water courses, including the ripper and bumpers, which have vegetated areas along streams and rivers and wetlands. These are resources to conserve and they include the 500-year flood plan, areas of high groundwater availability, identified aquifers, and recharge areas that are unique to special habitat. And that's quoted from page 10 of the Town Plan, Town Plan Conservation and Development adopted 10/12/2019. With appropriate vetted and POCD-compliant economic development, Tallinn could be put in the same categories as Woodstock, Vermont, Manchester, Vermont, Washington, Connecticut, and Bar Harbor, Maine, to name a few, creating opportunity for long-term sustainable and increasing commercial top-line revenue with bottom-line revenue improvements. Conversely, without adherence to appropriate vetting and compliance with established and adopted regulations, we could become a different type of destination to the ones of New Orleans, Reno, and Manchester City. The town, through its various commissions and committees, has spent a considerable time and money over the years for companies identified as experts to come in and advise on it. Most recently, Gorman &amp; York Advisory Services in 2018. As mentioned at previous town council meetings, I am not aware of any town council member or Tallinn Planning and Zoning Commission being licensed civil or environmental engineer or accredited commercial real estate developer. If they are, then I would like that to be known for the record. And if they are, for an arms-length, unbiased, objective, and partial, unprejudiced approach to any change by recommended experts, there should be similar professional vetting for any change or amendment to established, adopted documents from these governing commissions and committees, councils in order to mitigate the risk of creating a perception of collusion, conveyance bias, and nepotism. As I mentioned at town council meetings, from my role in the corporate sector, when I am involved with a project that requires vendors, third parties, all companies whom I have been affiliated, enlist vendor management protocols and go through specific requests for information, RFI's, requests for proposals, RFP's, requests for quotes, RQ's, to create an impartial, fair, and competitive environment for all vendors that are well-established and well-reputed in the scientific area for that project being developed. That will not cut corners to increase margins. I am hopeful that the same process will be followed when the town and its respective committees look to implement any economic development activity. Our community missed a huge opportunity a number of years ago when it chose not to purchase a key gateway commercial property on Route 195 leading up to the Town, Town Green, which could potentially have been beginning to the development needed for Tallinn and desired tourism growth in line with EDC's vision. With hindsight always being 2020, I am hopeful that current members of key committees and councils along with the town manager learn from a historical perspective and the potential loss of revenue that return on investment revenue costs our community when developers and surrounding land pulled out due to a number of policy and non-publical communicated concerns and issues. With the town's light and local scenic road ordinances and the PODC directive to be mindful of scenic features, as adopted on October 12, 2019, prudent development that is in line with respective committees and councils established and adopted governing documents, including wetlands and outlookers as referenced earlier from the PODC, POCD, is possible without changing these protected areas. Most importantly, a vendor management process that is arms-length, unbiased, objective, impartial, that enlists the vendor management protocols referenced earlier, RFI, RBRQ, to allow impartial, fair, and competitive environments for qualified vendors and developers that are well-established, well-reputed in the scientific area for the project being developed that is in the best interest of Tallinn. Due to the governing bodies of Tallinn that have characters to maintain, due to the governing bodies of Tallinn, do the governing bodies of Tallinn have the character to maintain the character of Tallinn's prudent economic development? I am hopeful the answer is yes. Within established governing rules, invest the needed capital and the time that will allow prudent and sustainable economic growth and development at the same time, protect the character of the historic Tallinn community and its vital resources, so we do not turn into a small-scale version of New Orleans or Reno. Obviously, Mr. Christopher Cook is very opposed to the sale of this land, as am I, my wife Lori, and her family. And I know of three other abutters that could have very well and kept saying that Mr. Williams was the only one who could have done anything. There's three other abutters that I couldn't get.
Just a quick point where, did you identify Mr. Cook's address just for the record?
60.
60, Woodfield Drive.
And we'll write that down and we will discuss that.
Names are, pens is writing is in sections that all own the bloody property.
Then, Madam Chair, just a point of ordering that you mentioned earlier meaning that you want 7:30 to have potentially suspending public hearing to provide the proclamation that the chief like to tell if he was in attendance. At this point, I saw him fly earlier, so we may be able to get to that.
Can we?
I know that would be, because I know there's a number of public safety officers here that are here for that specific purpose and it could be appropriate to do so.
Back to the public hearing, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I feel there's a dozen public safety officers here tonight that are for that purpose, so.
Motion to suspend the public hearing until after, what number?
Proclamation.
The proclamations.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? We're gonna suspend the public hearing and we're gonna go back to number four for proclamations.
So wait, we'll move out then so they can come in because there's a big crowd in the hallway. So Woodfield's Drive, which is about 20 people or more, we'll move out so they can come in.
Thank you.
They're welcoming, stayed up for us, so at least we can do, even though I'd like to see the chief.
Well, you can see, you can come out here and see. If anybody just wants to move over to the center, you know, stand against the wall, you're welcome. Okay. Proclamations and presentations.
Here we go.
Do you have your way?
Intended to be here, so.
Okay. So proclamations and presentations. Our fire chief, John Lyttel, is being honored with the two thousand nineteen Emergency Manager of the Year Award by the Northeast State Emergency Consortium. So there are going to be a lot of people here tonight who are going to share the hows and the whys of why John is receiving this award. And they'll do a much better job of me in that matter. What I'd like to focus on is the whole picture. In the portrait of why, there is no better person to receive this award. I've had the pleasure of knowing John Lyttel for more time in my life than I have not. I moved to Tallinn in high school, and one of the things I can say of Tallinn back then was we were the town where everyone knew your name. Small enough that you could easily say I knew just about every single person that was in my high school. John Lyttel was never the type to blend in. He was someone you noticed. Not for any bad behavior or shenanigans in any way, but because of his genuine personality. Everyone in town knew that John came from a strict family whose livelihood was public service. Not so much as a job, but as a way of life. Both John's grandfather and father were fire chiefs, and his grandfather in Stafford and his dad right here in Tallinn. And I can tell you that every single kid that I went to high school with knew who Chief Lyttel was. John joined the fire department as a volunteer when he turned eighteen years old. He stepped right into the boots that he'd been raised to admire. In two years, he became a paid firefighter for the town of Tallinn. From there, he worked his way up from lieutenant to captain, then deputy chief, and eventually, ten years later, he was appointed chief. In addition to those items, John became the Public Safety Director and Emergency Management Director for Tallinn in two thousand and one, the position which he's being recognized for tonight. In two thousand and twelve, he was appointed to the State's Emergency Response Commission. And in two thousand and fourteen, he was chosen to serve on the State's Sandy Hook Elementary School and Safe School Design Work Group for four years to develop a template for municipal school plans for safety. John's career is so much more than just this moment in time. It's been a journey, a long process, a career worthy of note and recognition, and the recognition is rightfully deserved. What I'd like to point out and recognize and this is hard work and dedication that John has shown to earn some of the positions mentioned above, those are positions that people voted for him to receive. So he has the loyalty of the men that he supports. Some of those are jobs for which the town, for the town, but the earning of these positions is not something that was ever handed to him. He earned every single one of them. He asked for no special quarter and he received none. Quite frankly, anyone who knows the man knows that he would not have accepted any. John is well-respected in the public safety arena. He is often asked to give presentations and talks to neighboring towns and even other states as a subject matter expert. He is the face of Tallinn's safety and to so many. And that is something that we should all be extremely proud of. Throughout his career, John has gotten to know many people in New England and is well-respected. The nominees for this annual N E S E C award are selected from emergency management communities in Connecticut, Maine, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, New York, New Jersey, Rhode Island, and Vermont. N E S E C annually awards one person from each state with the title of Emergency Manager of the Year for outstanding contributions made in the field of emergency management. Along with the N E S E C, we would like to recognize the hard work, dedication, compassion, and ethic of our very own John Lyttel. For years, we've known John was a treasure for Tallinn. It's nice to see him recognized as one for the New England region. Congratulations. I believe we also have people.
Yep, as Director Hackett, I saw him before. Is he giving you a word?
Uh, no, I think Bill Turley.
Oh, sorry.
And then he hates this. He is literally.
Uh, good evening. Sorry for my back.
We can probably turn the microphone to you so everybody can hold it here too. Yeah. And if you want to embarrass the chief, they can stand next to you. We'll do that.
Oh, he's got it. I'm here, chief. So, uh, my name's Bill Turley and with the Connecticut Division of Emergency Management Homeland Security. I'm the regional coordinator for that. I handle forty-one towns and cities from East Tatum to the Mass Line and from Canton over to Hebron. So I deal directly with the CEOs of the municipalities and the emergency management directors. Also, I'm the school lead for the state. So I have to deal with emergency managers from across the state. This gentleman here is one, he's amazing. Uh, he's always on top of things. Uh, when there's an activation of the E O C, I have to man that. And if I don't hear from him, then something's wrong. Because he's always calling me saying, "Bill, do we have any high clearance vehicles? Do we have any swift water stuff ready? You know, do we have the equipment ready in case I need it?" Yep, John, we're all set. You know, if we need it, we'll get it for you. So, but there was a time where he didn't call me, so I had to see if he was okay. I knew I can count on him. So.
It wasn't working that day.
The chief has certainly earned this award more than anyone else he deserves, deserves this award. And on behalf of the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services, Public Protection, Emergency Management, Homeland Security, chief, I present you with the Emergency Manager, Emergency Manager of the Year Award.
I don't think it's drinking weather.
I'm gonna say it's not over twenty-five, is it? I'm blown away. Seriously blown away by the turnout and the support. It's literally touched me, but I can't accept the award by myself. It's, it's the community, it's the businesses, it's the residents, it's my staff that I have. I have one of the best staff in the state. And I've had a lot of mentors before Bills come on to the department. And Tom Gavin has served many years. Uh, Mary Rose is back here. Mary Rose was one of my, one of my close dear friends from the state with Tom and helped me and mentored me through the years to learn and educated me and supported me. And Brenda Bergeron, the state's attorney, was a huge advocate, especially when it came time for the school plans. She's, she's the one that reached out to me to sit on it. But I've had the support, like I said, from everyone in the community, the businesses, the staff. And I feel bad of what I've done to my staff, of burning them out. And having an accommodation department is very hard to run throughout the state of Connecticut. Having union and volunteers and then a very small staff of emergency management and fire marshals and everyone elsewise, I burnt them out over the last two thousand and five to two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven era. And a lot of them stuck with me. And I truly can't thank them enough because I wouldn't be my physician or be able to perform my functions if it was not for my staff. I have a lot of, I have a lot of wives. And this is, this is one lady right here that has made me shine and has made me be able to get those documents, get those documents to Mr. Turley on time from the state's perspective. But Betsy Tanner is my, is my kingpin. She's made me shine. She's my, she's my guard at my door. A lot of people, she's developed my personality. She's developed everything. And like I said, she's my, she's my kingpin. And I would have never been able to do all this if it was not for my wife and, and my children that have supported me. And having three wedding anniversaries and having, yes, my secretary's up, my anniversary's up in my office at the E O C. And having my baby's thirteenth birthday was very hard to have. And having my two boys not see dad for many hours. And I had to separate them. And he actually got assigned to work with some of my staff to babysit him, but also taught him what I was learned when I started off in the service of, of my father. And it was a very hard life growing up. And my sister's here in the back of the room. Debbie here, Debbie not here. So my sister's here and my brother is, my brother is here right here. And he was my father's favorite. He was the one that was being mentored to take over. And he actually swapped roles back in the, back in the time. So through my, through my career, I have quit several times. And I quit on my father. And I always came back and went to many calls growing up with my father. Many nights, my mother had to put up with the, the years of service and not liking the emergency services and different things of us kids and what we grew up at. But we swapped roles. My brother actually got promoted as sergeant over in South Windsor P D. He actually took all my police books because I was going to school. But like I said, I, I, I am truly touched with the support and the people behind me and coming out and supporting. And I truly thank the state of Connecticut, Department of Emergency Management Homeland Security, and Mary Rose has, has nominated me for a few years in a row. And like I said, I was going through my paperwork. I think two thousand and eleven I was, two thousand and fourteen, and you know, last year she nominated. And it's one of those things, I guess this was my year. And you know, do, do things come to an end? I, I don't know. But I love my town. I love my community. I was born and raised here. And we have a great town. We have great residents, great businesses. And we have a great staff. We're the best of the best. Some of my colleagues from, from the other towns over here, I wish I'd met this gentleman years ago because I think we're like brothers. Mike Porcaro's the town administrator for the town of Vernon, the emergency management director. And when he got the emergency management director of the year a few years ago, we used to not talk and back and forth. And it took a couple of emergency instances to figure out how close we are related and how close we think on the same page. And we joked back and forth. But he has always been a mentor and a true professional and is a great asset for the town of Vernon. And I, and I truly thank that. And. One of my other colleagues is here. Joe. Joe is here from, from Ellington. He's the emergency management director from the town of Ellington, retired from the Connecticut State Police. And Joe, why don't you come in for a few seconds and just explain to them that you have no hard feelings with me and we work very well together.
This is a paid political announcement. No. Very quickly, the town of Tallinn, I worked here back in, I'm old, back in the early seventies, eighties. So the name Lyttel, it was not new to me when I became an emergency management director in Ellington. Because I remember a Ronald Lyttel, as a gentleman that's sitting right in that chair there, across the street at a place called Tallinn Mutual Aid, all by himself with one little microphone at the desk and a bunch of rotary phones around him. And that's how he handled emergency calls coming in back in the early seventies. Obviously, the name Lyttel goes on between brothers Dick Lyttel, Dennis Lyttel, and now Ronnie Lyttel over at the South Windsor P D. And my beloved partner, E M D, John Lyttel, right here in your town. Without a doubt, you have a guy right standing in front of you that by far is the best emergency management director I could have as a protege, somebody I can look to, ask questions of, work with, as if we've never been apart. And believe me, in the old days, as the Lyttels will tell you, there was definitely a division between, I'm the state police. Oh, yeah, well, I'm Tallinn Fire. I'm glad those days are kind of over. And it's much better the way it is right now. Congratulations, John.
Thank you, John. So for yous that don't know, the, the small town Green, that the little house down in the center of town, that's the house I grew up in. And my father is here tonight. My mother is in the presence, which I'm grateful to. For yous that don't know, the nine-one-one center's in the center of town. And that's the house I was born and raised in. And my father had started a nine-one-one for the county. And that's what it's developed into today. It was not very easy for us four children growing up in Tallinn County when nine-one-one was started out of our house. And we couldn't go anywhere or do anything. But in all honesty, mom, dad, thank you. Town council, I can't thank you enough for the kind words and the support. It's a true pledge to have a, a great new town manager that is a breath of fresh air for this community and has a lot of ideas and has really taken it, it sank. And you've been the first council head for over twenty years that has really taken invested interest in the community and, and shown up and has gone through all my stations and has seen what we have for staff and for myself and for the benefit of the community. I truly appreciate that and I respect that. And we will give you the best, the best service that we can for everything that we do. So, Mike.
We're, we're gonna, a, Tallinn for now. So we'd like to invite Chief Lyttel's family. We'll start with the immediate and then we're going to be extended with the second twice instead. Betsy, I mean, you pull the now to the seat. No, we're, we're fine. We have a wife.
As long as it comes with that treasure. And it's right in the paper, it's the treasure.
I guess the five ones she takes. And ready?
I feel bad.
So how about your associates? Did your parents do? Full fam? And brother, sister? We can do that. Well, we're sure this is a wedding. I'm a photographer.
Is that about the mark?
I know, right? Hi, William.
Because if she wasn't doing it, I would.
Perfect. All right, everybody, sit at me. Would you send the, your associates from the other town?
Yeah.
Mary Rose. Is that Catherine? Come on over here, Catherine. Come on.
I want to teach you.
How are you?
So for yous that don't know, Kathy, I didn't see her in the audience, I truly apologize. Kathy is here and representing Region One.
International Emergency Management Association?
It's SEMA.
It's been all over Twitter today. And they're very happy about that. And also Chief Mike, Mike Spira, representing the Connecticut Emergency Management Association.
I mean, I can't believe it's here. They have Region One here, so a lot of, thank you.
Who else? Are firefighters here?
Fire Department, hurry up.
All right, this is gonna be like a wedding thing, if I can't see, you can't see me, I can't see you. So, so you can see me. That's here. This is car.
Welcome back.
Do you want to connect your seats?
Always concerned people are loud enough.
Did we take your seat or?
No, no, you're good.
You gotta speak up.
70 with the thrive or reported after, if you want my notes, I'll give these answers. First of all, I just want to thank the council committee for opening this back up for public hearing. I don't know how many of you were involved last year with society, so nothing I implore you, I'm hoping this process is not fixing by having a public hearing, a check in the box, that you're actually taking into considerations of the points we're gonna make and the neighborhood particularly. It's been a lot of hard thinking about this. And so what I'm gonna do, I have like four considerations that I thought about that wanted to bring to your attention. The first, you know, I'm not sure how many of you actually looked at that parcel of land, looked at a zoning map, but just want to be clear, this, this sits on the north and east side of this land, it is significant weapons. If you look at the zoning map, a significant portion of this is also in the Aquifer Protection Zone. And so I recognize Aquifer goes back to the planning and zoning, but I did not hear, when this was first approved, everyone going to end the weapons meeting, right? You would have thought they would have got the right to talk about it because of the significant weapons that is in that area. And so when you talk about it, I did not even hear it going to the weapons portion. And when I, when I take a look at the actual T V A zoning regulations, there's actually paragraphs, right? Section 7.1 actually says, "T V A will provide for a mix of complementary land use arranged in compact and attractive districts in order to optimize developability, create walkable neighborhoods, while preserving environmentally sensitive areas and protecting natural resources." Section 7.2, T V A zoning, has a couple of bullets, 0 and 5. Protect important natural resources, especially surface and groundwater. My second point, when you go to the planning development site, there's a tool out there, the Map Geo, that kind of can look at zones and area properties. When I'm out there, I look at the lower cost parcel, its value, the evaluation is $446,000. That's common land. I don't think, I think Tammy mentioned in the beginning, that the town has not assessed the market value of that property. And I'm challenged that when that thing actually goes, gets bought up with Mr. Williams' property and goes commercial, that value could be significantly more going forward, right? So I look at my value of my property and I go to market, there's a difference there. And that number right now is 446 and I think that's actually low. And actually to kind of take a look at it, I actually did a little research. I said, what, what a typical commercial property in town, right, that would be built? Because if Mr. Williams gets it, right, he'll, he'll pre-sigrate it and then he's gonna sell it or build it to himself and want the value paid. So I looked at Ducking Donuts, it's right behind his camp and it has a butter. You know, it's on 2.9 acres, it's worth 583,000 based on your site. And it's on automotive, on 1.28 acres, it's worth 530,000. And a somewhat comparable size, right, so Big White Plaza is 20.5 acres, right? So when you combine the nine of his eight or over 20, it's worth 3.8 million dollars. So kind of roughly, if you kind of look across, it's roughly 200,000 acres as a commercial, you know, real estate. So what really is the real real estate market value of that property? Particularly when you combine it with those 18.5 acres. Now, Mr. Williams, I'm sure is a very smart businessman, right? If I'm planning his own committee last night, he talked about, right? In order to pre-site, prepare that, he's gonna have to cut trees, move stumps, blast, degrade. Right, I know what it costs to cut down a tree in my yard, right, near my hood. It's not gonna be inexpensive proposition to clear out 27 acres of land. So being a smart businessman, my assumption is he's gonna try to make money off it. Which then kind of goes again, he knows that value of that property is gonna be higher than that 400,000. His is about 400,000 as well, if you look at the zone. So I can't believe that he's doing all this work, pre-site preparation, is only getting 400,000. So just my, my final point on this, I'm not sure if the council is familiar with Charter, section 10.3. Section 10.3 basically states that any sale greater than 1% of a town budget, and so Michael, you can correct me, but I think the town budget's around 57 million dollars?
Altogether, a quarter of that, yeah.
Correct. Then it's gotta go to referendum to the town. So basically the time that you sell this property, according to our charter, it needs to go to referendum. And so I'm gonna challenge the, the council, right? When I look at it, I think of the time, there's no doubt in my mind, when you go to actually transfer that, what is that actual market value, it's gonna be only at 570,000. And so US Council members, you maybe had, did not make a decision before, I don't know what happens, right? What that constitutes, a piece of power or whatever, when you make a decision that goes against the town charter. So I want you to just consider that. My point three, when you look at the purchase and sale, I don't understand why Mr. Williams is not buying the land on day one. The purchase and sale agreement basically says he has a right to pre, pre-sig or pre-develop the land, if the right terminology, pre-raid, I guess. But he doesn't actually purchase, doesn't transfer until something's signed, he's had to develop. So I calculate that out, the land is worth 446,000, so middle rate of 36.5, that's $16,000 annually that town should make tax. Now, I went through cert training with Mr. Lightell, I saw what that guy does with shoe strings. So I'm about to go to him and say, hey, would you like to get an extra $16,000 a year to do stuff for the community? Well, there's a board event tomorrow night where you're talking about budget, but you're cutting pencils, right? Would they like to get $16,000 extra? The other one I brought up last night, zoning laws, don't apply to town land. So during this time period where Mr. Williams has the right to raid, does he have to follow the town zoning? Now, I was told this is a special legal assessment, I haven't seen that in writing, that he has to follow the zoning regulations. So I'd like to see that, but the question I have, the town's still owning it, but Mr. Williams actually is doing pre-raiding, does he have to follow those zoning regulations? Three, who, who takes on the risk? If you look at that, the agreement, it actually says he has to provide an insurance policy, right? Insurance policy is pretty broad, what's it covered? Right, he's got workers out there, they could be hurt. Now, the town goes and says, you're gonna hold us, we're not at risk. I'm a buddy here, something happens, my driveway is 10 feet from the border, it's up on a hill. Something happens, this erosion begins, my driveway goes down. Who do I go after? Do I have to have a civil action against Mr. Williams, do I go after the town, right? Is the town asking him to bond, right, an insurance guy, right? Because he has to do a, a, a kind of construction bond. Because what happens at the end of that three years, he hasn't found a developer. Is he gonna be expected to put that land back in the same condition it was before we started to clear it? Right, because I'm gonna sit here now, a big field sitting next to me, 20 acres of nothing in the land, right? We have homeless situation, I don't want a bunch of tents showing up in my backyard, right? So is the town considering the protection of risk as he starts this? And two, what will happen when it's not done, right? We have a developer coming in, I heard last night, in here, we've got anyone coming to town. No definitive plan that's gonna happen. And then my, my final point and I'll stop. You know, by selling this property, so I'm, I'm at the epicenter of this, I'll be honest, right? So behind me is where Mr. Williams, when I moved in, I knew it was, when my light taught last night, it was residential, got changed to commercial. And I said, listen, I'm willing to work with Mr. Williams and coming up with something that jointly helps the neighborhood as well as economic development. But this piece of land now butts the left side of my property, right? So up my driveway, 10 feet away, is now his land, it's pretty his land, and then behind me. And I told Tammy, I, I talked to you, my, my well's 20 feet from that land. My property, my building is 40 feet from that land. And so I'm really concerned as we go forward, impact on my property? And then what could be the adverse effect, affordability of the value of my property? So when I take these four things, I just, it does not make sense to me, from the risk associated with 10.3, the value, the risk associated with the natural resources, the potential risk of the way it's set up of letting him use the property and owned by the town? And then finally, you know, I'm more resident, but I don't speak for anybody, we're all concerned of the impact of this to our property. So I'll just conclude, just hoping you guys, this is not just a checkbox to follow the process, but really consider some of these thoughts. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alicia Charmit, I'm the executive director of Urbanian Alliance in Connecticut. You heard from Margaret Minor, who submitted the memo as a consultant. She is the previous executive director of Urbanian Alliance. Um, you have to speak to me. Oh, Alicia Charmit, and I am actually resident here. And so just a couple of things, just a correction, I'm just gonna reinforce what Matt had said, is that I have Special Act 1319 where the original intent of that act was for this land to be open space. It's true, and that was in 2003, it is true that in 2011, that act was amended, as happens in the legislature very often, for this to be used at for economic development. Now, I think the, the term economic development is open to interpretation. I am a constant reminder in state policy that there is economic development in open space and preserving our natural resources. So, and I think that the, the comments that Matt read from Mr. Cross alluded to that as well. Now, I have the town policies on transferring land in front of me and I don't see any exemptions to following these policies. It's already been stated that there was no appraisal of this. It's already been stated that there was no appraisal of this. It's very clear in these policies that these steps should be taken. Now, if there's something else in town policy that lists an exemption for following this policy, I think everyone would be really interested in hearing what it is, because the reason these policies are in place is so that you have a transparent process for transferring land that belongs to the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, Linda By, instead of Woodfield Drive. I guess I want to start with the memo that Ms. Minor wrote. And in that, she did mention that town policy number three. And it said that she talked about that, the series of steps that need to happen when a town property has to be conveyed. And, and the first one, I also did do some research and I found it, and I was reading through it. And as she mentioned, it has to be declared as surplus, I'm just wondering, was that done? All right, that's my first question. And then the second part is, the, it said that designated agent shall contact the budding surplus property owners by letter. It doesn't say anything about the purpose of the land. Now, I understand that it's been designated for commercial development, but this doesn't say anything about that. Not to mention, I'm a small business owner in town, who's to say that I can't develop that land for economic purposes? I pay taxes on my business, nobody approached me, I'm the butters. Now, you made the assumption that only Mr. Williams could buy that land. That's faulty logic. Nobody else was asked. Just because he maybe asked for it, I don't know how that all came about. But that's a, that's an incorrect assumption. So that was part, number two. We were supposed to be notified by letter, which I, is, I was not, and as far as I know, my neighbors have not. It should, it's supposed to invite those abutting landowners to submit a written reasonable offer to the town manager by a certain date. And that reasonable offer is to be equal at the minimum to the assessed value. As we talked about tonight, certainly $1 is not the assessed value of that land. We haven't assessed it, but I'm, I'm sure it's not, based on what I saw on the, the town's website, it was 466,000. And another letter said 150, not $1. So anyways, people were, the butters were supposed to be able to, to submit bids for that property. And then if, then it was a process that was to be followed, and if no reasonable offers were to come in, then it was to be opened to the community at large. I don't know that that was done either. So, and then it goes down, and it talks about more criteria. Now, I just wanna say that, we're here tonight because there's a public hearing. This letter of intent was drawn up, and it was signed by a previous town manager, by a previous council. And then it was brought to your attention, the process was done incorrectly. I think another process was done incorrectly here. We need to take a step back and do it right. Because I think what's happening is just because you're looking at the end goal and you want it done, doesn't mean that you can, you can do the process incorrectly to get there. And, and I think that, based on what we're hearing tonight, that, that the, the town charter and the town code did not follow properly. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sean Clark, I'm attorney, I'm working with some of the neighbors of Bions and the Johnsons who are affected by this property. I've had a brief opportunity to review some of the various documents and information that's been submitted as part of the package, and then the recording part could go to, there is a copy of the contract, I believe, in the package. If you could go down to the page where the signatures are. Yeah, no, it's like page 17, I believe. That one. So it's not entirely clear, but it looks like Mr. Williams has signed this agreement, it looks like this agreement's been given to the town in alliance for his application before the Illyn Wetlands Commission, and also for the purposes of the zone change, to have standing in order to submit those applications with the town. And even in the excerpts that are in the memorandum to the town council tonight, it appears that the town council acknowledges that this public hearing was really required for the purpose of pre-execution of this document. So it's not clear to me whether this has actually been executed by the town at this point or not. And certainly, I think the public would certainly need help to know that, and I think I've seen different versions of it. But having said that, a brief review of the letter of intent, which I hadn't seen until earlier today, appears to me that there's documents or information in a letter of intent that are not necessarily made this way to this particular contract. And so, one of the things in particular that jumped out to me was a paragraph relating to the location of the, and removal or transfer of the state DOT parking area, and there was reference in the letter of intent that that would be actually incorporated into the contract. And in this particular agreement, I don't see where that's located in any respect. The provisions that give him authority, or at least suggest that he can go there, provide insurance to the town, et cetera, may be there, but I don't see those provisions. The town has essentially given up on this piece of property for a dollar with no quid pro quo. There's no consideration, there hasn't been any consideration of what the town could get from it. As I looked at the town's annual budget, I think Mr. Rosen's numbers are pretty close, I came up with a number of 56 million and change, that would make 1%, roughly 560,000. There were a number of items in the five-year budget memorandum that were submitted to the town council in December that could be addressed if the town either got the fair value for this property, or worked out some agreement with the state, which there's been no mention of that. If the original purpose of this property is being open space with, this lady indicated a few minutes ago, if that was changed, well, why can't the restrictions with respect to where the money goes change? Why shouldn't that money come back to town if it's gonna be for economic development? And why shouldn't it be used to cover some of those projects that are in your December 2019 memorandum about, you know, fire equipment, school budgeting, computer software for the, for the town itself? And the list goes on and on. At the heart of this, I think the council has been somewhat led astray, mainly because the analysis that's required in the charter is not been followed. The, the language of 10-3, while it does provide an exception to the transfer of property, the retention of property, whether it's open space, town property, is really the essence of the public trust that the town has for its people. Holding property for future use is striving to get the best value for them. Giving it to a developer for the purposes of doing that is really a derivation of that responsibility. And the language of 10-3 says essentially that no resolution should be adopted. That's the first part of that paragraph. And then it says, the town council may, may, okay, be authorized to do that in certain exceptions. But in order to determine whether paragraph number one applies that exception, you have to know Mr. Rosen's number. You have to know which year that's gonna happen, what's the town budget gonna be? If the town budget gets slashed and has to go down by a couple of hundred dollars, well, the 1% number changes. And you also have to know, what is that 1% number? So whether the consideration is a dollar, I still think you have to know what's the fair value of the property, so that everybody in town is fairly compensated for that loss of this piece of property the town has been entrusted to give the town council to manage and control, and then ultimately dispose of. So I think that analysis has to take place. I will also tell you that I look carefully at the contract, all right? I'm a real estate lawyer, I do a lot of different real estate stuff, and there's no provision in the contract, except for the fact that the town has to certify that the council has authority to transfer this property, and take the steps necessary to do so. Okay? And in order for the town council to do so, I don't see how it can do it without an appraisal. I don't see how it gets to the analysis that says, we've done our duty under 10-3 without that. Unfortunately, there's no provision in the contract that says, who pays for the appraisal? So if Mr. Williams gets the benefit of that appraisal, it says the town has to do that because it's the town's duty to say that we're authorized to transfer it. So where does that money come from? Who pays for that? Where does that budgeting come from? So these are all things that I think the town really should consider, in terms of determining whether or not it's made a prudent, reasonable, and certainly lasting decision. Let me just check my notes for a second. And I do agree with Mr. Sexton, I might reiterate the comments of everybody else, but I think Mr. Sexton was the first one to make a point about this being an Aquafer protection zone. That obviously may be outside the purview of the council, but it certainly should be consideration for the protection of all the citizens. My review of the town plan of conservation development would suggest that the town council has a role to make sure that water resources, not just conservation sources, but water resources are preserved for everybody in town, and that's a role that should be borne, should be borne by everybody across the board, in Illyn Wetlands, type keeping of the city, and the town council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Al Delmasodra, 65 Woodfield Drive, Collins, Connecticut. Not to belabor the point, but I'm up here to voice my concern about the processes that have taken place. And I just wanna say that I, I agree entirely with my neighbors, and the representatives that have spoken for you today, that due consideration needs to be taken on this, that I think you jumped a little bit too quick. And we hope that you look at this a lot stronger than you have up to this point. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Yeah, it's a go once, yeah, that's what it gives you a comp for.
I'm going down, so let me keep you a little closer. One of the things that really bothers us about this, and this isn't a huge issue at all, it's just, we were just blindsided. In fact, if it wasn't for a friend of ours finding out this was happening, we would never have, our entire street would never have. And so we feel like there's this backroom cigar room kind of deal between the town and developer, in this lust for creating more economic development in town. And believe me, I'm for economic development. I am capitalist, I own a business, I have no problem with economic development. It's a slight and a slap in the face of feeling like the town cut a deal. There's no way in the world you can get me to believe that somebody didn't think, maybe all these butters should be contacted. And we had a gentleman tell us on one of the other committees, I'm in the zone, well, we were just supposed to watch the website every day, we would have found out. And so we, as citizens of this town, you know, we've lived here for 15 years, Bions have lived here for 20 some odd years, our kids all went to the schools, we get approached, every time the school budget comes up, please support the schools, please support the schools. We're asked all these things, and then we get, luckily, we found out, there would be nobody here, nobody would have known that this was going on. We just got a notice a couple days ago in the mail, because it was figured out, oh gee, we were supposed to give notice. So all of this deal was cut completely without us, and that's what bothers us. So here we are, raising all these legal issues, trying to put the brakes on, because that's the only resource we have. When this all started, because this backroom deal was cut, and, and I don't mean that to sound like something illegal was going on, I'm saying that as a citizen, what we feel like when this goes on. And I have nothing against Mr. Williams, and I understand, and he's built some beautiful homes, I've got some friends that have lived in his homes and so on. But that's not the point of it. The point is, we were blindsided, completely blindsided. And, and then, in some cases, it feels like, well, we're being unreasonable, you know, all of a sudden, we're anti-develop, we're, we're caught up in this not in my backyard thing. That is not the case at all. The case is, why couldn't anybody pick up the phone or send a letter out and say, this is going to happen? Your property behind you is gonna be clear cut, and a bunch of stuff's gonna be blasted and moved, and we're giving him the ability to do site work without even submitting a plan, which I realize is legal? Who cares if it's legal? Who cares? You know, we're citizens of the town too. And somebody could have picked up a phone, or sent a letter, or even called myself, the Bions, the Bentons in, who are direct butters, and said, and given with Mr. Williams, and said, look, we wanna develop the property, how can we talk? And so now we've got lawyers involved and everything else, and we're trying to put the brakes on this thing, and it could have been handled in a completely different, much more healthy way. Thank you.
I won't wait until you.
So go one, let me get the go once, twice this time.
My name's Angela Penta, 69 Woodfield Drive. I just wanted to make a quick note, so many of my, my neighbors are, have been long-term residents of Woodfield Drive. We've only been here roughly six months, and for the reason being is, the school systems are terrific, the town's beautiful, but what really made us buy here, and not in Blastin Berry or another town, was because of the allure of what the neighborhood looks like, because of the fact that it was private, and specifically, we were told that there were wetlands, which I own about nine acres personally, most of which are wetlands, and not to be built on, they're really preserved and, and special. I wanted my children to grow up like I did, which is running in the woods, playing, getting a kick by Ucapins, you know, I wanted them to have that experience. And honestly, after six months, my husband and I are devastated. We had plans to be here long-term, this was our dream. And it's just, it, it's just devastating, to see people that we've only known for a short period of time, but have really become already dear, dear friends to us, so impacted so heavily, we're butters. As the fact that this is, I'm almost exactly simultaneously working on the timeline, we specifically asked, you know, is this wetlands for, for anything outside of just being preserved? And we were told in the branded, we believed it, told by Realtors on both prior parties, that no, that it's completely protected. I guess we bought, we bought at people's word, and I just wanted to make it known that as new people come into the town, they're not coming in, and I add to them all for economic development and, and doing what's right to make sure that we, we can bring new things and, you know, add to our town as needed. But people are not coming in here so that they can look at a Target, or, or, you know, another grocery store, or subsidized housing, or, or whatever, or another Marriott. People are coming here for what Collins looks like and what it represents, which is beauty, a little bit of, you know, nature in your backyard, and for, for just like the peace and tranquility that it offers today. So just one question, first, you know, few points on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go once, go twice. Are we sure? All right, okay. There are going to be.
I have a great connection between motion and going to public hearing. At this point.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries, and we will close the portion of the public hearing part of the hearing. And that then gets us to our discussion part. So, goes down. There weren't a lot of questions, there were some questions. I think a lot of it, a lot of the questions that I have down here kind of get back to the charter section 10.3. And in terms of what could the butters have developed? Charter 10.3, and the disposition of property. Somebody asked, does he have to follow the town zoning? That is again, yes, that's not like, town zoning handles that piece. Takes on the risk. Insurance policy can get back to, the original intent in 2003 changed in 2011. And the current agreement is that it's economic development, so I don't know, we can talk about that, I guess, but it's not really a question. Are there anything that exempt the sales? For town transfer procedures? And has the purchase and sale agreement been executed by the town?
I can answer that.
That one? I've had it so far.
Well, I hope I signed that.
There you go, okay.
If you want, I can say so, that that page was signed.
If you want, I can say so that that page was signed after the meeting in September, where the purchase and sale agreement was first voted on by the previous town council. So I did sign that page, but since we're back at this step again tonight, we went back to the unsigned copy.
So is it right now just considered unsigned?
Correct.
Let me just get through the rest of the questions there that we can.
I'm sorry. Get them lying out of here. Can you explain that again?
What, so, I'm sorry. So back in September, the previous town council had seen the purchase and sale agreement. That was the time when the public hearing wasn't hacked.
Yeah, right.
So after that, the council had voted on that night to execute the, or authorized me to execute the purchase and sale agreement. I did sign it. I have a copy downstairs, Mr. Williams has an executed copy as well. But since that step basically was done erroneously, we're back here tonight, so that's why it's unsigned and packaged.
Understood. Thank you. Or do we need to make a motion to approve the purchase and sale before we begin the active discussion? Thank council members and yourself, or should we continue as we have been?
Looking over there.
I just have a discussion, final discussion.
Well, I think you can have the discussion before you have a motion. And then the question is, do you have all of the information that you need tonight to make a decision? And if you do, and you want to act on it tonight, you can do that. If you think there's additional information that you need, or you're going to direct any question, any request for opinion to me, I wouldn't do that orally on the record. You have to continue the action on this until. So that's your call, whatever you want to do.
That was Greg Conti, our town attorney, just for the record. And Greg, correct me if I'm wrong already, but if the town council doesn't vote tonight, the wetlands application that's currently before them won't be valid because that's depending upon a positive vote of this council.
So that's for wetlands to.
Right, okay.
So I think that was the majority of the questions that I had. There are also little sub-questions, but I think the main bulk of it gets around Charter section ten point three. And I know this is not a popular opinion, but there were no backroom anything. Everything was done publicly, openly, on agendas, on minutes, everywhere. So for the town council's perspective, the portion that we handled, it was all done in open meeting. So I know that, I know you didn't kind of mean that in the sense that you were saying it, like you said, but.
But there was, there was no notice given.
We should have been, the letter now has.
Isn't it not back and forth?
You're not allowed to say it now.
Okay, this is not a back and forth.
It's their discussion.
This is, we have the questions, and now we get to talk, to answer them and discuss that. So just try to keep that decor on here. So Mike, I think, how I'm reading this, do you guys have anything to add?
Yeah, one question that was raised, maybe can you answer this for Greg? The question of bonding or anything, or if it doesn't work and then doesn't receive to develop anymore, leaving it barren in trees, or harshly graded, what have you. I'm not sure what the town has as a bonding or anything. I don't know if I answered that.
Well, there's no requirement for a bond in there, there is a requirement for insurance.
Okay. So just for clarification, if the, if Mr. Williams gets a property and goes and does site work, and then the time passes and nothing happens with these property, and first comes the town, we just take it as, as is?
Yes.
So in terms of the question, where's the engine tonight? Because there's two public participations. Does anybody else have any specific questions before I kind of try to narrow this down?
And I just want to verify that pursuant to the conveyance, the two thousand, I mean, the change in two thousand and eleven act, a special act that everyone sort of dealing with right now, that it was restricted to economic development, and that, that the provision is, is that specifically, that no matter what the, no matter what the purchase price is, so if we sell it for a dollar or a million dollars, that as it stands right now under that special act, unless there's a second special act that's passed, that the town gets nothing out of it, it all goes to the, to the state. That's, that's correct?
Yeah, yes.
And I think it's also important to note that, from what I understand, if there is any intended use of the land beyond economic development, it automatically voids the deed and it gets reverted back to the state.
Yes.
So if we were to turn around and say, no, we want to keep it open space, we lose it, it goes back to the state. Right? That's my general understanding of it.
If you designate it as open space and say it can't be developed for economic development, it'll revert to the state.
Okay. So my question is, has there been any precedence for residential abutters to purchase commercial property for economic development?
Not this time.
I didn't.
I've never heard of it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. So that's. Well, I think that kind of gets into like the Charter section ten point three, all those stipulations there. And I guess, can we maybe discuss why or why not this land either does or does not fall under those specific stipulations?
I think that my reading, my reading of the opinion and my reading of the documentation we have here is that because it's a statutory, statutorily created special, the land was conveyed by a special act, that the special act requirements and restrictions trump any of the town charter or town code because it falls outside the parameters. It's a creation of a special act, it's conveyed into a special act. And as such, whatever the parameters set forth in that special act are the ones that would rule. Is that, is that, is that correct?
I would agree with that. I mean, what's in the town policies, if the town all of a sudden has some land, and it doesn't have any use for it anymore, and it can sell it to the public, there's a procedure for how you go about doing it. This is not that situation.
Yeah, this is, the land was basically held, for lack of better words, in trust by the town for the state, and that we were bound by the state's restrictions as far as how, what the conveyance was, how it would be sold, and where the money would go. And that really, that's, it's that statutory creation that grants us that land that creates the, creates the parameters of any transactions.
So in that case, with this, is that the cause for us? Like the whole process of declaring a surplus, designated agent, all the other, the things that are on there? Is, is kind of hard because you were the one who originally developed it and that. That was, I believe, and Brenda John, really the ones that were here then. I think that's how it was explained to us, that this was, it went outside of the charter because it was specified, like one by the app, in which we got the money. But I think that was the general. I have to go back, I don't know what I'm back then, but. I have to go back and do this. And I did not. I think I was such a good beginner in verse of ten point three.
I mean, I'm looking at ten point three on my phone here, and basically, like was already mentioned, that under bullet A, then they have one, two, three, and four provisions. That's if it's a piece of property that's the town was going to sell for a surplus. And I'm, from what I'm gathering from this, like you said, I know I wasn't here for the original discussion on this, but if this is following sort of special ordinance, then we are conforming to letter B, which is having this public hearing now, which is the step that was just the first time around. It doesn't say in the charter, you have to do one or the other. But it's probably good that we're doing this anyway. I know this was advice to us by our town attorney that we would have this public hearing.
And then, just also one other question I have is, in looking at the parcel that we're talking, talking about, that as far as economic development, the only other property that would be considered as economic development, economically or an economic development area, would be the parcel owned by Steve Williams, that everything else is deemed residential. And that the only other access you have, apart from going through the parcel that Mr. Williams owns, is through the residential area that comes up on the backside, where we have all the property we receive. Is that correct?
Yeah, from the maps that I've looked at, the only true access to development would be through Steve's property, or there's a sliver, I guess, of property that is, or there's a sliver of boundary line between the, what shall we call it, the commuter lot and the land. But we don't own the commuter lot, the state does. So it's not like you can buy it and say, I'm going to go through the state lot to get it. Technically, I guess you could try to access it from Woodfield's. What the problem is, is that entire section that's by the road is all wetlands, so.
And it's all zoned residential?
Well, that piece of the road is residential. Property itself that we have is part of the T V A zone.
Right.
Yeah, so it's zoned for the.
And so that.
Commercial. But I don't think that it's accessible for Woodlands, and I think that's why in the letter of intent, it was also noted that the property would not be, where is it?
It would not be accessed by.
It should not be accessed unless P C C allowed, is requesting it for emergency purposes.
And that, so in other words, basically, that the only way that you would have access to develop that piece of property is if you obtained easement from Mr. Williams to access it through his property to gain access to that, to that other parcel.
Yeah, that's a decision for that, for this conveyance that we're talking about now. That's, that doesn't mean if another opportunity from one of the other abutters, let's just say a residential could buy it or decide to develop it, doesn't mean that they couldn't ask for a variance to act for access. It's just saying for this, when Mr. Williams does the development, he can only access.
But what else, I guess, I guess, I'm sorry, any meaning?
No, 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 that's okay, go ahead.
I guess that the only, my question is, is how would they gain access? It would only be through that road, to the residential area, for economic, you know, for economic development purposes.
And I'm not, and I'm not saying that that's something I want to see done, but it's something that could potentially be done, so we can't dismiss it.
Oh, Roger, I'm just, that's why I'm just asking, the way that it's proposed right now, unless there, the property, unless there's there's access granted from the residents, through the residential area, getting that property, the only way would be, behave would be developed, would be to get a part, get an easement through the, through the Williams property from one ninety-five.
Right, but if the Bimes or the other buddy, I don't remember the name, decide to purchase and develop, then they could potentially go through the residential area.
Right, right.
So, you know, what we're doing is we're taking a look at this, this purchase agreement through the one lens of the, of Mr. Williams right now, and we're not taking into consideration that there could be other opportunities for economic development.
No, I fully agree with you. I mean, I'm taking, we're getting it from all, all possible aspects. It's just that I think that what we're trying to avoid is also having commercial, commercial, you know, traffic going through a residential area.
Right, which, right, and I'm just pointing out that a couple of people had mentioned that they might be interested, some of the residents who might be interested, and I don't want to dismiss.
Right, I don't either.
Yes. I guess the absolute fundamental question for me here is, for the purposes of the, the letter of intent that the last council signed, were all the processes handled correctly to get, to sign a letter of intent? And from what I understand, the answer to that is yes, but.
That's what I've been advised as well.
So the letter of intent happens prior to the purchase and sale, but the letter of intent is also legally binding, correct?
No, so let me clarify that. The letter of intent is not legally binding, so it's, two parties come together and they say, this is what we'd like to do, but we have to sign a purchase and sale agreement before it actually becomes binding. So it is not binding. Just because it's in there doesn't mean it's in the final contract. It's kind of a let's talk further type of letter.
Can we talk about the reasons why the assessed value, why there wasn't a need for an assessment for this? Because that wasn't really a question, it was more of a statement, but I think it's worthy of kind of looking at.
Sort of who wants to take that? My understanding, I mean, again, is that it was mentioned many times tonight, but the purchase price, whatever it may be, whether a dollar or a million dollar, or something to say that earlier, would revert to the state. So I guess there was, I mean, again, I'm speaking for people that, I wasn't time manager at the time, but I guess when they looked at this, they decided that we might as well give Mr. Williams a shot at, or whether it was, I gave the letter of intent with, that, you know, developing this for economic development purposes. I guess the way, best way to put it is to save some money on the purchase price so they can invest into the property and make it a good development. That's, that's all, I can't speak for Mr. Williams there, but that's what I would think.
And it almost seems like we are kind of like conservatives of the land, or we're just kind of holding it? It's not really the town's property per se, it's our property if it's used for economic development. If it's used for anything else, it reverses back to the state's property. So we're kind of in the assess perspective. Again, I think that gets to the ten thirteen, like not needing to declare it surplus or looking at the assessed value, because it's not a piece of land that the town is proposing. Is there any questions?
And then just, my understanding is also, for, this is just one step in that before it can even be fully developed, there's the other, all the other commissions they would have to pass through, such as wetlands, planning and zoning, and any other, any other organizations or any other agencies or committees that have jurisdiction over what's being developed out there.
Well, that's a key thing to remember. The intent of what we're looking at here is just the piece of land and the economic development of said piece of land. Like I myself vaguely remember asking, I don't remember who though, and I don't want to, I don't want to put this out there as like, this is the word. But that piece of property in and of itself is not very developable. It's like mainly wetlands, and there's very little, and that's why I think the the note that we have, the intent that we have, says that it's used for runoff, or wetlands, or open space. Because it's not actually, you can't take that one piece of land and develop something on it specifically.
Supposed to support the main part of the parcel, I believe. It's supposed to support the other side of them, yeah.
The intent is that it supports Mr. Williams' property as one of those things. Open space, or drainage, or, okay, no, no. But all the different things that it's, it's in there for. So, is that in the, if that is in the purchase agreement, can we outline it, or if it's not?
It's, it's under the closing.
It's under the closing?
Yeah, yeah.
I was looking the wrong place, I apologize. That's okay. I believe it says the property is for stormwater drainage and/or treatment facilities, and/or open space, and/or commercial development, or development approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. In conjunction with, I think that part's not in there, but I'm just thinking from the accessibility perspective, like if you can't get to it, it's landlocked unless you're going through the residential area and through the wetlands that are there, or directly through Steve's property. I'm sorry, Mr. Williams. Anyone else? Another question, she has that.
And I, I think this was talked about, so it's using that, and I apologize for asking a question again. But on, coming back to the appraisal question that we had earlier, right? So we did not do that, wait, that step was not done, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And is there, is there precedence that we typically do do that, the assessment of property value?
I think the difference here is that this is not, this is not, technically it's town land, but it's not town land. If we don't do with it what we're supposed to do with it for the thing. So we've never had a piece of land that I am aware of, that we have had in kind of holding it like that, or something from the state. So if this was like a piece, like for instance, there's one parcel, anybody wants to buy it down there in the industrial park that Tom and Tom owns. If we decided that we were going to, sorry, sorry. If we decided that we were. If we decided that we were going to get rid of that piece of land, we would have to have an appraisal, we'd have to go through the whole process and a public hearing and every fly, yeah, obviously. Yeah, like through all of the other stuff because it's town-owned property that is an asset of the town.
That's not true.
So we would have to go through that process, the whole 10-3 process that's in the charter. So am I thinking of that the right way, right or like in that this is land that is specific to transfers from the state, it's not?
Well, it's not unrestricted town property that you can simply sell for the highest bidder. It has to be a specific purpose, and if it doesn't comply with the special act, it reverts to the state of Connecticut. So it's not really like selling surplus land.
So we wouldn't declare it a surplus, we wouldn't do any of that stuff because it's not that. Anybody else?
It's maybe more of a question for possibly Rick, if not Steve Williams. In regards to the deposit, many fill or other material on the property, I don't know if there's any prior experience with the town of developers, developing property where there is wetlands, you know, if they have, if they were given access to impact that wetlands, would they have to use fill in order to develop any of those areas?
Well, that's going to be within a purview of the Wetlands Commission and Council.
And I guess, yeah, this is my naivety in terms of legal ease, but the whole harness agreement between the seller and the buyer, does that impact the abutters in any way in terms of any impact to their properties that.
That's between the town and the purchaser.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a little stuck. I was part of the last council, so I was involved in this. And we rely on the town manager and we rely on the town attorney to make sure these processes are followed, because I certainly don't know. And now that process has been challenged by some of the residents, so I'm not comfortable that, or I'm not satisfied that we're getting the answers that we need tonight. So if we're forced, there's going to be a motion put on the table, if we're forced to vote on it, my vote's going to be no. Because I'm not comfortable with everything that happened here tonight and the people that have been speaking.
And we can ask for, we can keep this open, we don't have to close it tonight to make a decision tonight. We're not required to.
Okay.
Sure. I'm, I'm not comfortable either because we haven't had the opportunity to listen. And I know it doesn't look like there's the potential of another developer, but it doesn't look like we've had the opportunity to be able to see if there's a partnership that could come along, someone who could work with Mr. Williams or one of the other property abutters. I don't feel like closing it tonight is due diligence to the residents. You know, give us time to, to read through everything and understand that before we make a decision, I guess.
These questions that were brought up are, are for lawyers, not for somebody like me. So I, and I'm not, right, so I'm not comfortable with making a motion and voting on it tonight. And if we do do that, if the council decides to do that, then like I said, I'm going to have to vote no because these are questions that I, I need to hear answered.
I just wanted to verify perhaps a point of order. So a public hearing hasn't closed, but perhaps a, a vote is not ready to be taken tonight. Would this fall under old business then at our next meeting?
You can take, yeah. So.
And maybe, I would just suggest to you that in the meantime, if any of the council members have questions that they're looking for our opinion on, you're always welcome to ask and we'll provide you with your opinion.
But question I have is, and I understand, I mean, I agree completely, but what is a reasonable time then? I mean, this is, that's where, this is something where, you know, we are, we're addressing an issue and we're trying to at least rectify what, what could be seen as, as a fault in the process. But so then it's a matter of where, how long do we keep this open? How long do we continue on to see if there's going to be any other developers? Because, and at the same time, we want to do what's right for, for our residents, that we care deeply about what's going on here. We want to make sure that, that we hear everything, that we give everybody an opportunity. At the same time, that, that there's, can be seen as a potentially binding agreement or at least a legal issue here with Mr. Williams. And as such, you know, that we are now also exposing ourselves to liability on his side as well. And so it's, I'm all for it, and I agree that we need to find out more information and we could possibly take a look at, at, at other potential bidders on it. But, or other developers, I should say, but how long, how long is a reasonable period of time?
And I don't know that we're opening up to bid.
Well, that's what I mean, I mean, I don't mean opening up for bid, but opening up to see if there are any other developers that propose. To this point, it's my, to my knowledge, nobody's come forward on this piece of property at all, since it's been held since 2011.
He's leaving the person town, that's correct.
Yeah, and so that, that he was the one that initiated this discussion with the town. It wasn't like anybody other, any other developers came forward and made bids on it or, or expressed interest on the property in the now nine years that the, that the town has held it. As for, well, seventeen years that the town has held it, but for the past nine years, what is an open economic development? So I think that, that we have to take a look at that and sort of, if we're going to leave it open and see if there's going to be other people that are going to be offering to develop it, that we set a reasonable expectation and a reasonable timeframe, if that's, if that's what the, if the council decides to do. And I don't even know how I would feel on, on an issue like that, on the legal liability aspect of it.
So I think if that's the case, if that's the way that we, I don't know in this case, do we put it up for a vote or do we just table it and say, get your list of questions to the town manager? And you would.
I'll work through them with the town attorney or, I mean, pretty much that's, I would imagine that would be.
Madam Chair, my, it would be my position that I, I need to table this as, and put it on his old business for next month to address, so that we can have an opportunity to address our specific issues to, through the town manager and the, and the town attorney.
I second that motion, Madam Chair.
Any discussion?
So just for clarity's sake, we've, we've had some questions by residents. Are, are these going to be compiled and then these questions are going to be specifically addressed? Charter questions and anything else that was in there?
Yeah.
I mean, so my questions to the town manager are, are their questions. I don't have any specific questions regarding this parcel, but I'd like to hear the answers to, to those.
So I have written down, what, I have eighteen either questions or statements with a few that have subsections. One, two, five, six, seven, like eleven, like sub-questions or statements in between. I don't think all of them are questions per se.
I think that, just to sort of ease it, I believe that, that Mr. Bion, correct me? And some of the other people have presented their statements as, as written documents to the clerk here. So you could take those, compile them, and then direct the questions that are present inside those documents to, to, to Mr. Rosen and Mr. County.
I can provide what I have here also. And then we can kind of, Mike, I, you're going to have to play a jigsaw puzzle here and put them all, like combine where we can and look at the.
It should be more of, Rick, you're going to have to play.
No, we'll do.
I know, she's going to do it before it gets him because we pay him more.
Yeah.
You do it and then send it to him.
So we'll move, so this will be perhaps under old business from February 25th, and it won't be a public hearing, so.
Yeah.
It'll just be part of our agenda, and so council will be delivering, it won't be a public hearing.
Does that give you enough time if we put it on for the 25th?
How's your work, little Rick?
If I get the questions, I'll definitely quickly, it will be enough time.
Okay.
Worst comes to worst, we have, I believe, March 10th after that, if we have to. If, you know, I want to make sure that we get the questions and gradually gone through them and we have enough time to develop the response and have responses to the things, so we're not.
What I could do is if you send me your questions, anyone else, I could be the center focal point and then I'll send it on to Mike, if that makes it easier, or if you'd like to make it, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I, I'll send him, I have my list right here. And then we'll have the stuff that Lisa has, which I think I may have gotten the majority of it, but we can just do a double check and get those to Mike, he can smoosh and smoosh them together and we'll be ready. And we'll decide as well, I don't have to have the agenda open for next Tuesday. So we've got about a week to decide if, if one meeting is enough to get responses so that we can have the discussion and we can go over it. All right, so any more discussion?
I don't know if this is appropriate or not, because a public hearing, should we initiate a straw poll in regards to our decision? Because I have the time guidance, but I don't feel it's appropriate to extend or disable this discussion for the next week.
I don't know if a straw poll is really, everybody that's here is against it. So we don't need a straw poll in that sense. I, I just think that this, Mr. Williams, well, yes, but I, I don't know that we need a, we've already closed a public hearing. Straw poll is during a public hearing.
Okay.
So it's already closed. And at this point, I think it's a matter of taking all the questions and then getting legal response back to them. That, and then we can continue our discussion as council at whichever meeting we have coming forward. It gives us enough time to, for the other, get the answer and discuss it again. So, any discussion on table? All right, all of them favor of table?
Aye.
And opposed? And you stay in? Motion carries, be tabled until we get the responses and put them next to just. If it's us to seven, eight, reports and boards of committees responsible or council, I don't see a copy here. Yeah, I can read it, yeah, so. Then we can go to your liaison section, which is next. So reports of town council liaison. Planning and zoning had, thank you, Rick.
Hi, to our discussion yesterday about predeveloping grading. An applicant had requested that we change from 100 feet setback to 15 feet setback, and that was denied. So that did not go forward. They had a couple of other discussions, I'll refer you to their, that was, it's stuck, chomped up to our ways at the time. Land acquisition meeting is going to be Monday, February 19th. Our tourism update, we're going to be having some ratings upcoming next week. And they started in, every town has a story as I told you about before, the state hasn't put it on their webpage, but it is on the Middlesex Community webpage. And unfortunately, Talon's pictures got put up there, but the text didn't, so we're working on correcting that area. But for the next year, the state, like it will start releasing once every week or so, a different state or a different town in the state, and it will highlight what happens in that town. So we also had Heidi from planning, she ended up putting some information on Visit CT about a couple of our walking tramps, one of them is snowshoeing. So we are getting some tourism.
She had most of it.
Well, this is, this is true.
But you can still without snow, you can still walk.
Stay in CT had their meeting this morning. We had our quarterly meeting today, and we went through some more points that we can get with that because they didn't get specific guidelines from some of the town council. Many of the kids are going to be pushed off until next year. Instead of us trying to get grants this year because we didn't get any feedback, there will be a few more. Heidi was able to get, I can work to 70 points now, but some of that's going to fall off after a year. And we're going to be getting our year report, that is a requirement that Sustainable CT gives to the town council. Our complete county committee, we've had a couple meetings, both the communications meeting and the group meeting. So they find that, if you click on the census information, you'll see selected information there. We have a communication for the new, we're going to be taking a look at the letter that our town manager, Mike, is going to be developing so that we're going to show that civic organizations, employers, businesses in the town to try to ensure that we get a complete count of Talon. And what's really interesting I found out today, there are towns that are having contests and they're bidding against each other in a good nature way to see who can get, reach a certain percent count the fastest. So they're, they're having like a little competition, which I thought was pretty interesting to look at. I don't know that that's anything we want to, we want to engage in, but like, like we can go to Coventry and say, listen, you know, we're going to hit 85% count by April 15th, can you do that? And then maybe the chief, the town manager can, then give certificate of $5 to a, because that's other than $5, right? To, you know, against the Coventry town in the north. But it's, it's something that I thought was very interesting, and it's a great way to try to, to make the numbers come in more quickly and get the residents excited about, you know, competing, plus the schools.
I just want it so I can just do it and be done with it, just sending my little card.
Yes. So, and then Blight is going to have a meeting at the end of the month. I don't remember the date, I think it's next Thursday. And I think that's all.
All righty.
The next permanent celebration committee meeting is on September 17th. I will be attending. That's all I have for that.
There you go. That's all I have to say about.
I, I will meet Mary Pat for the first time.
She is one.
Yes, yes.
So not necessarily a formal meeting, but the conservation commission for the sidewalk, you and I both went up a Dr. Rose to survey a property that abuts, I believe, the Bolton Lake or the northern section of Bolton Lake, as well as the Atlantic White Cedar Forest. It was a very great time, and then a separate conservation commission event that I personally attended. I believe also Lisa Burns in the back, that also attended was a full moon sidewalk of Nafla. It was a beautiful full moon.
It was a crazy full moon, it was like daytime.
And I just want to give a shout out to Bop, you know, we did a phenomenal job of sending up a telescope that we captured Unabundant and the Lion Nebula, as well as a Bluetooth speaker system to attract hard owls and other wildlife to the area so that we can have this really full nature experience.
I should have gone to that.
Yeah.
I was going to go to it, and then I got real lazy and tried to just.
I believe there's going to be one in March, I have to, have to check in, but I believe there, hopefully maybe in March there will actually be snow, there's going to be more snowshoeing, pecking. That was the one deficit of not having snow is that people were mindful of rocks and stumps that were along the trail and it was blazing clear.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
All right, Waterbed had a meeting on February 6th, the special meeting to discuss the budget. May I review the savings that were found and then review the proposal on the table to see what if, what if anything they wanted to put back into the budget? It was a really detailed conversation, it was really good. Several items were identified, and in the end, they tasked Dr. Willett to update the budget with those items. They will be presenting the new budget number tomorrow and voting out the final submission, I believe, tomorrow. EDC, CERC is looking for people to bring business into the state utilizing site selectors, which I think this is kind of like, Will Kurt was there and Mike was there, but it, we kind of got into the conversation about our goal to have a broker, and the woman that was there was saying, you know, maybe you're looking more for a site selector, not a broker kind of thing, it was a very interesting conversation. And they also mentioned the AdvanceCT.com site, which is where they're kind of looking to bring business and stuff like that into the, into the state. Something that they're doing that I found really interesting is they're using LinkedIn for a homegrown marketing plan by utilizing posts that Todd is doing with hashtags. Just a few basic posts that he put up have already garnered interest and generated a few phone calls from people who are looking at possible development opportunities. This is one of the places where they were looking to partner up with the town council goals to get in front of influencers and working with site selectors to market Talon. They got into a conversation about social media influencers too. So it was definitely a refreshing view that they were taking with trying to bring economic development. They're also going to be reinstituting the business subcommittee, they're looking at one forum where businesses will be invited to give feedback. And the Talon chamber is going to be holding a legislative meeting at CNC, going over all the new legislation and its impact on business. And I think that's it that I have for those meetings. John?
Nothing for me, this week, took the week off.
Nothing for me this week, took the week off.
Uh so uh Birch Grove got an update, actually from Katie before we went into a executive session earlier today. And then uh right before we got came in a full session. That the uh state came back and the contractors came back and said that the uh development will be within the forty-six million dollar budget that was set for them. So that we avoided, well, that they found two point one million dollars in uh how do they put it, value engineering. In the reduction of the price, I didn't have an opportunity to find out exactly what that was. But uh that means that we are on track and on budget at this point.
Glorious news.
Yeah.
Alright, so I did not make the agricultural meeting, I'm afraid to mention for that. But Mike and I did make the person rec uh meeting, which was quite good. Um we had a group come forward with the idea of, it's called a challenger field or miracle field. It's um baseball field slash soccer field for uh handicapped children and individuals. That's basically made out of something like the quarter mile track for high school students. So that's going to be the entire field made out of so they can more easily move it versus move around versus grass. So they came forward and we're looking for um site options. Maybe a couple of different, or a true or um cross farm, cross farms, yeah, that's where they'd like to do. So that was um interesting and very exciting to see if they can.
Yeah, quick question on that, was um Talon Little League a part of any of those conversations for park and rec?
Top soccer.
You know, top soccer, yeah.
So there's a group that was not directly involved with either of those, but both are seem very interested in helping uh out this um country fruition.
Okay, thank you.
We do have people on Talon Little League, on Talon Soccer and on our committee.
Oh, okay, great, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, I would think that going forward, we do have, we already, we do, we are actually one of the early pioneers for top soccer. And they currently use the field up at uh Frandals. And I know part of that was because it's totally fenced, they have no access to safety. So um putting it up somewhere across farms or something like that, there would definitely be use for it. We definitely have a strong, a strong, at least top soccer is a very strong.
Right, and and it was, you know, when I was present in Talon Little League, there was a, you know, the entertaining idea of trying to build a field. You know, to support, um you know, um the handicap uh facilities or people with disabilities and that regard, so it's good to hear that, thank you.
Sounds excellent, um and there's also a reminder the Eagle Freeze is coming up and.
That's on my chairman's report.
Alright.
Got a couple of people here, um like.
Talked about a new heating slash cooling project for the town lodge, um that they're going to be implementing, which I hear that more comfortable in the summer.
They got it, kind of seen it.
Also a lot are discussing the, how fees are going to have to increase due to minimum wage increase throughout the state. That's going to be something they're going to be adding going forward, so people are aware of why prices are going up. Uh and also the outdoor movie idea they had planned for May, they're looking at Frozen Two, so. And they are in currently in search for uh new sponsors and companies in town, let's sponsor, offset some of the costs. Really appreciated and there's also some talk about um dog park potentially, some people in town, so. Mike, Mike already was watching people, but uh that that's pretty much it.
We got Frozen Two last night, it dropped a little bit on iTunes.
Don't watch it.
I'm in Disney. I'm in the Disney van, I watched it three times in theaters, you know, it's a sickness, I can't help it, I'm fully acknowledged. Alright, Tony in, so I don't know if I missed anything from Waterbed perspective you would like to add?
No, no, I think you got it.
I got it.
Tomorrow will be the love.
Tomorrow, yes. Alright, that takes care of um. What is that takes care of reports that gets us to new business, discussion on potential cemetery regulations revisions.
Okay, um so back, uh we did the public works tour a few weeks ago on a Saturday. One of these stops we made, town council made was to South Cemetery. And uh it was a good day, I remember it was a nice sunny day, we were out at the cemetery. And um we decided that at that time that we might want to put on a future agenda, so here we are. The discussion of the enforcement of regulations related to non-conforming decorations. So council witnessed um several uh plots in the cemetery that do not currently conform to today's uh fee schedule and regulations, which is what's in your packet. Actually, I should touch on that, so in your packet tonight, you have the fee schedule and current regulations, uh one pager. And then also a little bit more of an in-depth breakdown in the next two or three pages. That gets into a little bit more about the regulations we're really trying to enforce. But um while we were at the cemetery, like I said, we had seen several plots that perhaps didn't conform to the regulations. So this sort of opens the discussion uh to the council, if they would like to either make a sort of a policy decision. Whether the our public works staff should be more strict in enforcing the current regulations. Or perhaps if we'd like to consider relaxing the regulations so that they're not, you know, bearing in mind that usually cemeteries are sensitive nature. And people are grieving and people just want to be sensitive towards that. Um also, since we're opening the idea of looking at the cemetery policy, it was brought to my attention by DPDW director Scott Lackman. That uh going forward, it might be good to embed into their policy um that foundations for um headstones will no longer be provided by the town for monuments. They should be the responsibility of the monument company and not the town, I'm just glad I may talk more about that. But it's something, but that's something that uh you know, also looking for discussion tonight. It's worth noting, the last time the cemetery fees and regulations were updated was August twenty eighteen. So it's good to every once in a while to take a look at it and look at our policies, kick the tires and see if there's anything that you, you know, tighten up a little bit. So with that, you know, perhaps if you want to open it up to discussions with council to let them win, or if you would like Mr. Lappin to win, either way.
Uh yeah, so I think at this point before we even look at a motion, you know, this is something that we talked about when we were on our tour. And um if we can have a robust conversation about um what we think about the current regulations. If we think that we should be looking to modify anything, um Scott, you stayed, I figured it's late for you.
I'm here.
So that I think we definitely would need to update the regulations, but if that's the case, that's something that's even beyond what we were looking at from the regulations on what could be allowed. But if we have to put something in there that is saying that responsibility is now from the monument?
Yeah, the issue with the monuments is we we pour the footings and it's not a problem doing it for a footstone or for a veteran's stone. The issue becomes when somebody spends five, six, seven thousand dollars on the headstone. And if our footing, you know, Talon does, we get frost, if it moves and falls, responsibility is on us. And if that breaks, now we're going to be responsible to replace it. Whereas if the monument company puts it in, the town is no longer liable.
Is that standard, you know?
A lot of towns, yeah, a lot of towns um let the monument company do the, you know, the entire package.
And I would not, this is not a dig on you guys at all, but I would think that the monument company would know exactly kind of what they would have to pour to sustain the headstone of the size that the person ordered, whereas we're kind of.
Correct.
Yeah, so I think um we can discuss that, it almost sounds like something that we should think, if nothing else, if we tapped everything else, we would still kind of know what we may be adding.
I think that's fair.
Yeah, and and you would be responsible, we would be responsible of showing them in, on what areas of the plot they discussed.
Yes, we still go ahead, we still go in and mark out the plots for them and show them exactly what's.
This way we don't end up with.
Correct.
And and just in a ballpark, I'm sure it costs you a time, energy, right, to do that, right? So is it a ballpark on on that, Mr. Lappin, that you can give in terms of when that does happen, how much time that you have to, you know?
It never works out that we can go in and do two or three at a time, it's always, you know.
Right.
So it's sending a couple of guys out with an excavator, we go down, you know, at least um three, three and a half feet so that we can get uh down to the frost line.
Right.
Some, it it depends, I mean, if you've ever been out in the cemetery, we've hit rocks where we're out there for a couple hours with a jackhammer. But on average, we're losing money, there's no question, based on what we charged to put in foundations. And speaking to the different monument companies, they said we're way below where we should be, but because it's a a service that the town is providing.
Alright, thank you, I appreciate that, Miss Lappin.
Let's say anecdotal, it was a beautiful day, it was extremely windy and we did notice several instances of items that would not have been in compliance. Actually leaving the location of the headstone and either obstructing or causing potential damage to other headstones or at least obstructing them. I think the other area of concern I had in terms of enforcement is there was at least one or two instances of um liquor and uh unopened cans left. And I think that leaves us in a potentially hairy situation, we open alcohol on town owned land. So I feel that might be an area where we might want to be more strict with enforcement in terms of removal of any containers or any potential illicit substances that could be accessed by anyone going past the cemetery.
And and to Steve's point, um you know, while we are very respectful of the grieving process that family and friends um are going through. We also have to be very cognizant of the safety of the visitors and the workers. How many people have been out there mowing your lawn and you hit something and it goes flying? I know you don't want to be in the position of mowing and having, you know, a visitor um potentially get hit with something that's, you know, not where it had gotten blown off or um kicked into an area. So it's, it in, it was pretty windy and I was picking up flags and um uh flowers and statues. And moving them back to within the ten inch area as respectfully as we could. And I understand that all of your workers, when talking to them, they were very respectful. You know, of the process that the families go through and what they do. And I agree with having the alcohol out there now that it's on public record.
And also the, and also the damage to your equipment and the fact that, I believe Melissa Brown, you stated that there are times where you accidentally damaged something in the process of trying to do proper maintenance that the owner of the site would go back to and say, you need to replace that. And that creates a whole other conflict that I feel it should not be placed upon you as an accessory.
I think there definitely could be language put in around, does not impair the care and maintenance of the grounds of the cemetery in neighborhood plots. I think that's kind of something that I think is pretty generic, but.
Can we add some instances, you know, we're doing this for the safety of our visitors, you know? But it's not, some of the, some of the visitors have mobility issues. And if something is going out of the ten inches, it's harder for them to move around and navigate to, you know, their loved ones' site. Some of the items, I think at least one, luckily it was on the edge, but there are some people who put things out so far that it it becomes an impairment if someone has a mobility, mobility issue to travel farther down the line, so.
So do we want to review what we have there currently? And then kind of um discuss options from that? Or are there any other general, overall comments you guys want to make before we review?
Is it just a matter of these regulations not being enforced? Or is that what kind of the supposed regulations, or or are there new regulations that?
They're they're not, they're very loosely enforced, right?
Yes, so so and actually bringing this on, so I, as part, before tonight's meeting, I actually took a look at policies from Coventry. Will be Summers and Alexandria. And um we we are, in terms of where we are uh compared to those policies. They also enforce similar, if not exactly the same types of things as we, our policy says we should be enforcing. So and it's interesting, our policy uses the terminology bric-a-brac of any design that's forbidden. One of the policies refers to Nick Nacks, I think that might be correct, it's actually, but says Nick Nacks are not enforced. So we we're in line with our surrounding communities in terms of what should be enforced. But it's more, um I think our staff is looking, including myself, we're looking for guidance from the policymakers about, given that it's grieving, grieving is a sensitive time. And you know, there might be some disappointment by the public if if things are changed. We just want to um give the opportunity to talk about if there are any prudent changes that should be made. And if so, because this is an ordinance change, well, people need to have a public hearing on it. This is just starting the conversation tonight, if if there's an appetite for to go forward with any changes, we'll we'll make sure to know it properly, people can come out and say.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Well, should, are they going to be in regards to what we already have? Or like should we re, alright, so before you ask that then, um or quickly, the regulations that we currently have are no trees. All tournament fees paid prior to a tournament, monument maintenance is the responsibility of the owner. Lots may not be transferred, artificial decorations are not permitted between April fifteenth and November twentieth. New artificial flowers may be used when Easter occurs prior to April fifteenth. They must be removed within ten days after Easter. New shrubbery is not permitted, any existing shrubs, we don't have a date on there, but I'm assuming like at some point we would know if any existing shrubs will be removed by the town as they become overgrown, um I don't know when that piece would have been effective.
That's a good point.
Probably be well, twenty eighteen.
No, actually, because we didn't change that in twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
Right, I know we didn't, but because that's last, so we put it in effect. Yeah, may, well, yeah, I know, but I mean, like in the whole like existing, does it, every time we update this, it's there anyways, it's a blessing.
I get it, we can see on the first one.
Okay, concrete products, metal urns, glass jars, votable lights, votive lights and bric-a-brac of any design are forbidden. Planting of annual flowers is permitted within ten inches of the burial site of an upright monument. Planting of flowers by flush marker lots are prohibited. Natural cut flowers are permitted if placed in an appropriate container. Potted plants and flower boxes are allowed only during the ten day periods following Easter Sunday, Mother's Day, Father's Day and Memorial Day. Monument size in the infant section shall be no greater than eighteen by twelve by six inches. And the maximum monument size shall not exceed forty-four inches tall. Memorial wall rules must use Mackenzie style urn only. A slant monument size of two feet by one feet will be only size allowed. I was gonna say, yeah, missing a word there. No planting allowed around wall in the town of Talon will provide all plantings. That is the gist of the regulations that we have. In the back, there are other things, but they're really just repetitive of this, like it gets into the grave site fees and stuff like that. Which again, I think it's just a longer version of everything you see on the front page there. So with the regulation read.
Yeah, so my my question on this is one part for say, concrete products, metal urns, glass jars, votable lights, bric-a-brac of any design are forbidden. But it says cut flowers are permitted in in um appropriate containers. You know, is there, is there a?
Well, and I think also religious, like I know my father has had, they have the Catholic light, the the flower, I mean the candle thing and that is allowed as far as I'm, as far as I know? Like I think it's, I think it's allowed, but um I would consider that to be, right, but I would consider that to be a um a votable light. Cause it's a, yeah, well, I know, but the light that's a, right, you know, it's a candle.
So that's something that we have to have answer. And the other thing I had a question on, it says Mackenzie style on there. Is that a industry name, Mackenzie?
Yeah, it is, it's, those are just cremations, obviously, it's it's within that.
Okay, cause I I didn't, I didn't know if there was others urns with, you know, like Kleenex and and tissues. You know, I didn't know if there was another urn that fits the Mackenzie style that has a different name.
And there could be that this was from, you know, some time ago.
Okay, cause I, if, my my concern here is if we're requiring people to use Mackenzie urn, I guess we said style, so it's okay. I don't want to make people spend more money on something than there is something that's just as acceptable, that is much more cost effective.
Well, I think that that word, style.
So that point covers us.
So as long as it's the same, you know, size and shape.
Yeah, I see, like, basically.
And Mackenzie is no.
Right, I I just wanted to be sure. And um the other thing is as, you know, we need to be cognizant as um religious, as we become a more diverse um population, that we are cognizant of the ethnic and religious uh and faith practices. So that if there is something that is existing that, you know, like if the resume comes to us and says, well, this is what we do in in my family, this is our custom. That, you know, we can make accommodations for that, um if it doesn't fit in with this list. I don't know what they would be in.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that, at the same time, we also have to be careful because now. I agree with that. At the same time, we also have to be careful because now by making certain, certain variances or allowances, now that now becomes, well, how, what do you, where do you draw that line? Because now we're getting into the, you know, limited governmental use issue and a lot of other legal issues where once you make an exception, then
The exception becomes the rule.
The exception becomes a rule and then how do you, if this person says, okay, well, this is what my, you know, my faith is, and this other person says, well, this is what my faith is, and then it's like, okay, are you making a preference as far as one, one religion?
We can't, we don't target those religions, that's what I'm saying, is we can't.
Yeah, I, I know, I'm, well, I'm gonna also say, you know, that if, if you that we either say that we've been making exception for a religion and so that you may have somebody coming in saying, well, in my family, it's something where we have a cross that's, you know, this high and this high and we put it on, on the gravestone, even though it's not on the gravestone. But then another person says, oh, mine is just putting a votable candle here. If you allow, you know, the votable candle, then you're gonna have to allow the, the cross as well if you make an exception. You know what I'm saying? So we either may, we either say that we make it, we allow every religious exception, no matter what it is, or we allow none. I mean, that's really what it comes down to.
That many of these things are religious.
I understand. I'm just saying that when, when we, when we start drawing the different differentiations, then we have to be careful.
Devoted, that's, I would say, and that, and that's even if I'm saying it, right, like, I don't know what it's called, like, I'm parent of, of Catholic in that sense, I don't know what it's called, but that candlelight thing, I don't know that that's really like, the rest of this stuff here, I don't see any of this as religious.
And Brenda, I mean, I just want to.
It's like Easter Sunday.
Well, that's a date, yeah.
No, Easter is a, is a religious holiday, is that an exertion?
New artificial flowers may be used on Easter prior to, in, in 10-day periods following those things, so.
So, so my, my comment is if some, if there is another religious holiday
Right.
that follow, that falls outside of those dates, we need to allow them to be able to use artificial flowers or whatever it, it, it is, because we've already made the exception for Easter, we've already identified when religious.
Scott, you know, the, the, you probably won't know this exactly, but do you know why specifically Easter Sunday and Mother's, Mother's Day, Father's Day and Memorial Day? Potted plants and flower boxes are allowed only during the 10-day periods following those four specific.
I believe those were deemed the, the holidays where most people visit, you know, their, their site of their loved one. It's not like every week somebody goes up and puts up a potted plant, so those are, those are more of the popular, if you want to call them that. And, and listening to the discussion here, we were all out there and I, I asked Mike, I said, what is the significance of the stones on top of the headstone? Do you typically see that in Jewish cemeteries? So if you're gonna allow people to put stones on top that could fall down in the grass and get hit by a mower, then the next person's gonna say, well, my little ceramic angel should be out, and this is, this is the question we're up against. Where do we draw the line and who, how do we enforce it? And we can take this stuff off and put it down back if we have to. That's not an issue, but when these people went to an uproar. And I think, I, I would assume when you do the public hearing on this, you'll probably have some people come in and you know, voice their opinions.
But I just want to say, I totally agree with you. I mean, it's, it's not an issue, not an issue where I disagree with you, I'm just saying that, you know, from a legal perspective that there's, you know, just, just as was said here, once you make an exception for one, then you have to, then it really becomes, well, how do you restrain that and how do you sort of set this certain parameter, who do we're discussing? You know, so long it's within the, just within the length of the grave, of the, of the headstone and 10 inches out, I think it's where we are right now, it's within that general area, then it's something that, that could possibly be acceptable and only as high as the, as the gravestone, but that's, that's something that we need to really discuss and you know, and, and see if it can get possible.
And, and legally, we can't discriminate based on religions.
Right, understood. You know, that's, that's exactly what I'm saying. I, I understand that completely. What I'm saying is, oh, is that if you make an exception for one, then you have to make an exception for all, you know, then it becomes a content issue and you can't, your preference for one or the other.
I think there's a way to do the regulations without getting, you know, just.
Right, and they ask you neutral.
Um, so I would kind of like to see instead of trying to allow or ban everything we can, can, can't think of, just leave a little bit of ordination, a little more up to the folks who do take care of the cemetery and other bases. I got a little, those are, a little, a little more subjectively, so, you know, in regards to tasteful, respectful and things that don't interfere with other people. And we have a whole, number eight, there's a whole list of things that are banned and I'm pretty sure we saw.
Every single one of them. Every single.
So, and I, I don't want to get in this situation where they're going out there and enforcing this very stringently. I would like that a little more loosey-goosey, but a little more up towards subjective opinion of the people who actually maintain it. And because, you know, we can come up with 800 things that are banned, but there'll be 801 and then we'll have an issue, so.
We don't want to make our cemetery policy bigger than, than even.
Yeah.
In terms of how it came out.
Yes, and I think that the whole thing we're looking at is more from the safety aspect rather than a preference aspect or anything else, it's the safety aspect of, of the people that are there along what Brenda was saying, allowing free access to without creating any issues, but also having safety for, for the people that are out there working.
Uh, I, I, we just have to make sure we're being respectful of the neighbors, so I think I agree with what Kurt said, alarming somewhere in the room, I think he's been here.
Uh, just a brief little bit of love idea, I was talking about, I was looking into the terminology behind bric-a-brac. And it's actually in terms of French, its originations are at random, and I actually would say that's not a correct use of the term. People are pretty intently putting stuff at, at grave sites, so it may be better to find it, an alternative terminology, because that other town uses. Because technically, if someone was interpreting that, they could say, well, this isn't, that brain light and it's a purposeful, as, as a grave site.
Well, that's, that's a good point, is because, you know, everybody that is going down there is typically placing something that is meaningful to them of the person that passed away, so one person, one person's trash is another man's trash, kind of a thing, you know, so what you consider bric-a-brac, I may consider very personal, and what I consider bric-a-brac, you know, you may consider personal, so I think if we can maybe tighten it up to not have, like, you can have A, B, C and D and more kind of look at it as what's allowable in like, the area, the, the 10-inch kind of thing or whatever, like, you, you can do whatever within that, that, I'm going along the line, my brain is going more towards what does not impair the care and maintenance of the grounds of the cemetery and neighboring lots. You know, within like, X amount of space around your own headstone, your own plot, you can't infringe on your your neighboring plot, you can't kind of go over off to the side, but you've got this space. Do with it as you will. In a sense, I don't want to say that as like broad sense, but like, you know, kind of in a sense there. Do it as you will as long as it does not impair the grounds. If it's something that is gonna impair the maintenance of the grounds crew, then we say, I'm sorry, you can't have this because it impairs the maintenance and it's too much of a, too much work for the grounds crew to have to manipulate and move it around. Is there stuff on here, like the no trees? I clearly saw some trees, some bushes and some, like, some big stuff there's.
The issue becomes if you have somebody who's, you know, been in town all their life, whatever, they're, they're buried, or their family has planted something and the family moves away and they, they don't come back, you know, some people, once you're buried, they say, you're buried. Now it's to us to look in and say, okay, this obviously has been ignored, we go in and we try to cut out, you know, cut the bush out or whatever. But if you have people who are constantly coming back and doing work, we kind of, you know, turn the cheek and learn.
Right, you know who's gonna back and maintain what's there.
I mean, our guys are in there all the time, you know, you know, what's an active site and what has been ignored for quite some time. And, you know, Steve, I understand what you're saying about the alcohol.
Yeah.
And, and I gave Mike some pictures of the cemetery in South Windsor. My wife's parents are buried in South Windsor as is Officer Assleton, who was killed. You can get rich if you picked up all the cans that are left at his site from all his buddies that come in and sit there and drink and leave the empty cans there, but it's something that just takes place and, you know, and our guys do the best they can, but we're not in there during this time of the year.
Yeah, it's generally happening at off, off hours, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's, it's fair, I, I don't think as far as people down there at lunchtime, but.
I mean, summertime, we're out there weed whacking and mauling constantly, we're out there for a cemetery. During the off time where we're not in there mauling, we're weed whacking. You know, we go in and we do some maintenance and then it sits until springtime, so if somebody's been visiting, you know, they leave the bottles around, it's and we can be a little improvement and make a trip through, you know, and take a look.
I guess Mike, your father language, maybe kind of, it would be appropriate to just, whenever we're talking about certain ways it is allowed, making it known to residents that it should be mindful of weather conditions and that securing, securing their
Secure, yeah, not necessarily.
Those, those pieces of memorabilia is in the interest of both their property or their plot as well as others and to the entirety of, entire cemetery.
I agree. I have one more question.
Thanks.
For the veterans, it says, a veteran should be the person on the age just hired from the armed forces in United States who has, then was a resident of Talon for at least 10 years. Is there any exceptions made for someone who has moved to Talon and unfortunately during their, you know, less than 10 years, the dining service?
Which number is that one, Brenda? I know.
It's between, it's between intermittent burial fees and the value of the cemetery, I don't know.
Yeah, go to, instead of go to the front page.
Oh, over there, yeah.
So there's an address on it, so, you know, what I'm thinking of is a young family moves here and the the service member is employed.
Yeah, is there a logic that, again, this tends, we go back to beyond both of you, but is there a logic that was used to
These, these should have been in place for many, many years.
To me, that is, that is a bad regardless of.
And that's something that you guys as a policy for.
Yeah, for me, I would add for a current resident, you know, for, for me, as a person who's a current resident and is actively or is a member, not a.
I don't, I, we personally.
So, I think, yeah, well, I think, I think, yeah, going, going, so going into, let's see, because they have the same thing under Valley View under subsection fourteen.
Yeah.
And then if you go down to subsection B, that they, a single, single grade at regular cost of value, honorably discharged veterans who have been residents of Talon for less than 10 years. So I think if we just, you know.
Is there, yeah, like, that's, I guess, I would want to understand.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand, I understand what you're saying.
Cemetery veterans section regulations, so that's just seems to be for Valley View.
So I think that would be as in.
I think that's the thing, Valley View, it goes to that, so it's only in Valley View.
Or, or I would say.
Is it limited in space in Valley View?
I would say active.
No, that would be, that's good.
Active duty and.
Valley View is a one-half.
It's on backs, or that's why.
Right, so Valley View veterans, right, single grade at, I have, uh, um, oh, because it's, this whole, this whole section, you guys, like, a half cost.
I could, I could get the, I could get a language for that.
Yeah, but my, my idea of the language would be, or is active duty and a current resident of Talon.
Oh, okay, that there. Okay, so this is, we're simply talking about the cost of the plot.
I know, I'm saying that.
The cost of, like, the burial, that's what this is, like, 14?
Oh, it's.
Single graves, single grave at one half off is available to any honorable discharged veterans who have been or were residents of Talon for at least 10 years, so you get a half off, been a resident for 10 years. Single grave at regular cost is available to all discharged honorable discharged veterans.
I just am passionate to that.
Right, I mean, and there's also, there's also the provisions where VA and there's other sections of the US Code, which also covers where, you know, if we're talking just the issue of cost, that the, the costs are offset by the, by the VA.
Yeah, maybe why we didn't put it in there, because the cost is offset.
The cost is offset by VA for any, for any, for any service members that were killed in.
So I, I will withdraw, withdraw that.
But I'll still take a look at that to verify. I mean, that's a good point, and thank you for bringing that up.
I think in that case, yeah, this is what it's really getting down to is the, the, it's a cost of the grave site and if you have been a resident for 10 years, it's half the cost of your honorable discharge. If it's less than 10, it's the right now cost. So is that something you guys want to review or are we?
Um, I would, Lou will bring something for the next one, for, I think we understand what we're looking for and Lou will bring something that we can consider next.
If it needs.
If it needs to be.
I would say when you get that, when you have that information, maybe send it to Mike and he can send it out to all of us.
Roger.
Yeah, we can put it in. Yeah, yeah, it's gonna help you. So what I have on here is items to be considered.
I just wanted to just bring up two quick things that are in mind, so, one thing that Scott confirmed with me is that when somebody comes in to, to purchase a plot for either themselves today or for a loved one, everyone does get a copy of the one-page cemetery regulations, so it, it is known, these are, you know, people do are aware of this, and so it shouldn't be a surprise that we'd like, you know, we'd want to see if it's enforced or not, but if we do leave enforcement subjective, how and whom we notify if there's a problem could be an issue. People will move out of town.
Yeah.
Or families will move away and then we don't have current records of, you have a non-conforming ornaments and then if TPW just goes ahead and pulls the ornament and then that family comes back to visit, they're gonna be upset, so we, there's some subjectivity issues there.
Good, good point, maybe ornaments instead of bric-a-brac. Or knickknack. My dad's got, my dad's, I got a little angle on his, so.
Alright, so the items that I have listed so far that we need to consider is the footing being poured by the monument company, something in terms possibly that alcohol containers being locked out, I don't know how specific we're gonna get on that, I kind of like the idea, the second part of that, if there are loose items and damage that maybe caused by maintenance of the grounds or wind. Securing items that are not loose during bad weather. Is there anything else on here that, oh, that, that.
Yeah, and removable full alcohol items, or items that contain alcohol.
And yeah, that one makes a good, somewhat.
I thought that was, you know, empty in terms of.
And you said empty, I'm just. Did I say empty? It's not, it's not empty.
Okay, I said.
I just said something in terms of alcohol containers.
And I think there was, I think Brenda may have pointed out that there was one type of, so maybe just reviewing any minor technical or chromatic errors and just providing that section. There are any sections that might have those minor technical errors.
Can I just toss one more thing out there? For people who was ended, you guys saw that at one site where they had the hockey sticks or whatever. Maybe you should consider saying, okay, six months or a certain time period after interment, something like that. Give them a little time to, you know, so it's not the following reading, but we're. That's, just to give a little time.
And then I just want to do a quick point of order that is nine fifty, so I don't think ten is. We need our camera's approval to extend the video recording, so. Not saying we need to rush things, just want to make that as a point.
Um, so, alright, so six month intern, after internment. Somehow losing of the. I don't know, we'll have to talk about that one.
If you try to really, really, like, six months.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we're getting into a lot of maintenance of this, this day, six months, this day, six months, like, I don't know, we'll have to, I'll add it to the list, so at this point, I don't think we're gonna actually vote to modify any kind of regulations.
Yeah.
We don't have a, no, I don't, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to even like, move to put it to a public hearing yet, because I feel like.
No, I think they'll, they'll directly, direct directions to Mike, they'll provide drafts, revision, and then we go to the public hearing.
Mike, I'll send you the items that I have here, that I have for items to be considered. But I still think regardless, even with the items to be considered, I think maybe you take a swing at what you think we're looking at and we can discuss it and kind of nail down exactly what we want in there.
We can maybe present a red line policy so you can see side by side, old versus new and go from there, then if that's
Okay, that works for me. Anybody else? So I don't think in that case that there is really anything else, eight dash one, so we're gonna move to eight dash two, appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and provisions.
We have one, we did have a reservation in the Butler's Commission, that way back, that's it. We have a couple pending individuals that are interested. I think yours may need some time to just to consider for park, for recreation board as well as for any of the weapons.
Alright, um, we have no old business. A report of the town manager.
Uh, very quickly, because a lot of this was very touched on, twenty-senses was touched on, we created a section on the town website. It's right now, it's in a hula-when format, our next meeting is February twenty-fifth. Our next meeting is February twenty fifth. Uh, we've been, we've been doing the budget meetings with each of the town's department heads to discuss operating budgets. Um, went to the regional legislative breakfast at Talon High School on January thirtieth. Yesterday, Joe Courtney hosted a webinar on tax issues related to crumbling foundations. The slides from the presentation are available on Mr. Courtney's website. Upcoming events, we have the capital budget presentation, February thirteenth at seven PM here in this room. Uh, there's an E chip board meeting tomorrow. There's a COST, which is, um, council of small towns annual meeting on February nineteenth. Uh, regional legislative breakfast Thursday morning at the high school, um. No, that was last week, that was last, that was last, that was Wednesday, yeah, okay.
You first said.
Uh, that, that we just mentioned, February nineteenth, February twentieth is the next house issue, I'll, I'll.
All right, I'm gonna just ask this quickly, I'm assuming you're gonna want to talk again?
I have one question I want to ask, and it would be.
Okay, and Amy, or, uh, there's only four of you left, are you all gonna want to talk again?
No, we're just supporting him.
So just my, I'm just thinking, we're not.
I will not take you back ten, I promise.
Well, I'm just not relying on you. So, um, okay, adoption of minutes, let's try to do this.
Matt, you're creating a motion to adopt the minutes as noted in eleven point one and eleven point two for January twenty eighth, twenty twenty special meetings and January twenty eighth, twenty twenty regular meetings.
I, I just have a request where, uh, for the, uh, for the regular minute, regular meeting minutes.
Perfect.
Uh, under subsection nine point two, it'd be the one, two, the fourth paragraph where it says that I inquire if, uh, moving about services that are in place could be done without forming a commission. That it was act, I, I'll rely upon, uh, the recording of it, but I believe that I was asking if the commission could look into the issues that were already, for the commit, uh, for the, what we already have in town, not if it could be done without a commission, but if that's a, that the commission could properly do.
Okay, Lisa, you got that one?
Okay, uh, gets us, oh, wait, no, sir, we have a, we have a, I was gonna say, yes, we have a revision now, so.
So I did create a motion to approve the adoption of the minutes as amended, bigger eleven point one, eleven point two.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, opposed, motion passes, correspondence to council?
Okay, so we received a, um, email from Nicole inquiring about, um, her, she has a pride event in June, that she, this will be her second year, uh, developing. She'd like to find out if, um, the town would like to, uh, help organize with it, so that we can have some town pride. Um, we have an email from, um, Bass, who is a message from, uh, she sent us the board of ed email she had sent about the current school budget. Her concern is the, um, miss, if we do not, um, appoint both art students at T, art teachers at Talon High School. Um, we received a few emails about the commission on disabilities. One suggestion that was, I, I think agreeable to us was that we change the name, um, when we are discussing this to a commission on residents with disabilities. Um, and we had some, um, I think everybody read those emails.
Yeah.
Um, from the, uh, three, four residents, um, about the, um, commission for residents with disabilities. Um, we received three emails from residents concerning, um, a name that was shared by one of our members of this council and asking us, one resident asked us to take a look at our own social media policy and see if it needs to be revised to better verify its application to elected officials. Um, so one more email about the commission on residents with disabilities. Um, sorry. So we more emails about the commission on residents with disabilities. All of these are, um, in support of having this commission go forward. We received an email from Lisa, um, with some information on the Honeywell project. Um, this was in, I believe, um, this was from Lisa Hancock. This is some more information about, um, the payments that, I guess someone had a question on Lisa?
Oh, Lisa in the front, yeah, that is, right.
Yes, so we had that.
Yeah.
And, um, then we also had an email from Lisa Burns about what you had mentioned about the Joe Courtney, um, webinar. There was some technical difficulty, so I'm glad that you mentioned that the, um, handout was online, and those were all of our communications.
All right, Steve, question, two minutes ago, board of ed?
No.
All right, we'll do the interview issue, but now, or is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I did create a motion to extend the video recording past ten PM.
Any discussion, he's just, all's in favor, opposed, 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 motion passes. Chair questions are for, okay, still don't try to do that by ten. Um, board of ed, board of ed has a meeting tomorrow to finalize their budget ask. Um, if you are so inclined, I encourage you to go and understand, um, the board of ed budget and what they're coming in at. February twenty second is Eagle Freeze, we've got several people in this room that are doing it. Um, if you haven't found somebody to sponsor, sponsor someone, make them jump in the water, it's great. Um, we'll have our joint meeting on February twenty fourth with the board of ed. The charter requires this meeting for discussion of the request of the board of ed to the town manager. We will have, um, according to our, our agenda and what has to be on here, we will have recommendations and suggestions to the board of ed regarding consolidation of non-education services and cost savings, period of public participation and petitions, uh, and then in petitions and/or questions from the board of ed to the town, town council, questions to the board of ed from the town council members specific to the board of ed budget. This is your opportunity to ask questions. And then we will have another meeting in March, where we will review the total budget and how all of it fits in, and the board of ed will be featured in one of those meetings. And they can, um, if they can't answer questions there, which is reasonable to think that they won't be able to answer all of our questions, they can address those questions at our meeting that we are having in March. Um, we use this meeting as an opportunity to understand the ask as it is.
Okay, so this is, uh, between the, uh, town council and board of ed, where we're the ones asking questions, so is this.
It is our meeting.
Okay, or is it open public forum, where there's the, the board of education gets.
There is public participation, but it is a town council meeting where it is up to us, like I said, the, the, they're going over their recommended budget, it is our opportunity to ask questions about that budget as presented. If they can't answer those questions, they can get them back to us, so we can then use them in deliberation in our March meetings to decide where the overall town budget is going to be. On two twenty five, there's regional economic development, CRC is working on draft action plan. We will have four, um, four town meeting plan after the draft discussion. Two representatives to EDC will be in attendance at that meeting. I had chair hour, had three visitors, it was great. Uh, one, we discussed, um, offerings of the senior center and trying to understand what is offered in comparison to other towns outside Talon. The senior population is going to be twenty percent of our, um, Talon population, and they would like to see if they're, um, if they are being represented well in the budget. Um, also, I had a couple of people that came in to discuss the neighborhood watch idea that we discussed with the police, and they had questions on how we can control or train people for this watch. There's some consideration around, you know, who's gonna be doing this and what's gonna be allowed and what's not gonna be allowed, so I think those are good questions to bring back to Kevin. I'll send you those questions, um, to review. And lastly, I had a conference call with Joe Courtney, um, his administrator, his, um, what do they call the person that's with them all the time?
Legislative.
Legislative, that's it, to discuss the crumbling foundations issue, the pressure of the ECS grants that we receive from the state and issues around transportation, um, and what they can do to help us from a public state perspective. It says two commissions and petitions from council person, anybody, anybody here?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I just want to say congratulations to all the students in, um, the town of Talon. Today was the one hundredth day of school, and they are all one hundred days smarter. Um, so it was great seeing all the pictures, um, on social media. Um, today is also, um, February eleventh, which is two eleven day or two one one day. Um, two one one is a service, uh, it's a nationwide service, but we do have a Connecticut, um, dedicated service. And if you go to two one one dot org or dial two one one, you can receive, um, crisis help, you can receive information on daycares, you can receive lots of information. Um, so maybe at some point you can share, I, I shared up on my, um, on my social media a little bit of information about two one one, but they're, they might have some services and help that some of our residents are looking for. Um, and then do we, for the social media policy, is that something that we can review?
There isn't a social media policy for elected officials. The social media policy that we have is for town employees and volunteers. Hmm, no, it's for town employees.
Town employees, that's right.
It's just for town boys.
Okay, so I thought that it said something in here about it also being for volunteers, I had to admit their word, so.
Uh, will you have something?
Yeah, um, this is, I mean, I just, this is a personal thanks to, um, to the community, I'm gonna get choked up on this, but, um, for those who don't know, my son was overseas, um, and visited his mother during spring break or during winter break, uh, in China, and he was over there for several weeks. And, uh, that they traveled the area very, very thoroughly, and he got back home just after the, uh, or just before the, the whole coronavirus thing came out. And, uh, that there was a lot of concern that he and his, he and his mother were exposed to, uh, to the virus, and there was a really stressful time, and there was a lot of things going on. Um, during that period of time, that the town residents and neighbors have just been outstanding. A lot of people asked me how he was doing and expressing concern, um, and I went out and thanked them and, uh, and let them know that he was thankfully now, everything is good, that he's, uh, that he was found to be, uh, safe, that he was not exposed to it, his mother is fine as well, although she is still over there and is sheltering in place for probably the next month and a half. But, uh, just the outpouring of, of support by the town is something that I, I can't thank people enough, and it's really, it, it was, it showed how neighbors can support one another here and how working together that we can, we can be there for one another. And I just want to say thank you to everyone here, all the town council members who expressed their concern, as well as all the residents, um, there's no way I can thank you enough for all this, so thank you.
Anybody else petitions, Steve, you have something, I can tell.
I was just gonna make. No, no, it, it's, it's, no, I was gonna make it up, then unfortunately, the two commissions that is on now I won't be able to make their next three meetings, because we are having dual meetings at the same time, so conservation, we have a capital budget here and then our FOI workshop at the same time, and then there's actually a water commission special meeting that's during our joint board of ed and town council meeting, so I'll throw a lot of minutes, who knows, their work back.
That's why I forgot, the two, two thirteen capital, capital project, did you mention that?
Yeah.
Okay, good, right, you got it. Anybody else make petitions, petitions, maybe you have?
So just to let you know, Big Ten thinks sustainability, equity workshop training on February eighteenth at Three Rivers Community College in March. Um, it's free to members of sustainability, it's from eight to noon on that Tuesday. So there'll be some training that I can bring back, anything about that, Brian?
Um, it says up to public participation.
So my case.
It's all you, my, it's all you.
I'm not trying, yeah, I'm, I'm.
It's a, it's a, listen, this is your time.
Yeah, yeah, so just, real, really quick, um, one question on the end of public hearings closed. It's had a question, so as it goes forward, if we have, neighbors have additional questions, are we allowed to send those in or is that just off the table?
We have the, uh, it says it's gonna be on the agenda, it'll have, you'll have the two and the three minutes portions of the next agenda. I would say. Yeah, if we, you'd be.
But by all means, send an email, you know, you have.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I have to check, I just want to see if the hat's, what is coming up.
Yes, you have questions that, and you have questions that we didn't.
No, you could send an email, anytime you want.
Okay, all right.
The, yeah, the, yeah, the public hearing rules for the, uh, and zoning are different than for the town council
Okay.
in some respects.
This is the most confusing process, I think.
Welcome to government.
I have a whole bunch of ideas after going through this, but I'll hold those for a minute. Hey, one, one, so.
Well, you know, just missed the election, you know?
Maybe I'll be on the corner, sorry.
Exactly, two years.
Hey, just, um, not really a public hearing, about a regulation, ten point three, so we'll talk about the regulation. I think you guys really need to look at that, another lawyer's statement on it. The first line says, interest in real estate, interest in real estate. So Mike, I want to know who I can talk to, what is the scope when that ten point three talks, any account's interest in real estate? What is in scope and what is out of scope? Because the whole premise is something is not included interest of real estate in the county.
Doesn't it say any realistic interest of any real estate?
It said, right, the first one, a purchaser of other conveyance of any interest in real estate by the, sorry, it's going, by the town, so I just, so I just want to know, what is the, what is defined as any interest? Because the whole argument I heard today was it's not considered interest, doesn't fall under the town charter. And so I just want to go and find, tell me, someone can tell me what is included in scope and what's out of scope.
I, I think it all.
Oh, okay, hold on, I don't know, I don't want to.
I don't want, I don't want to debate, I just, my question is really, I want to get a question.
I know we want to get back and forth, so I would really appreciate it if you send that question
It's a question?
to town council at, or town council at talon dot org, and then we can add that to the list.
Nope, I'm, and I, I wasn't pointing, I'm just saying, just, I just want to find where I go, we appreciate it.
We're all like itching to answer you, see, so it's just, yes.
I got it.
I think it has to be with a, honestly.
And obviously.
Yeah, no, I'm.
I would rather, like, we'll get it to the people to get.
I will send it.
And please don't feel rushed just because it's ten after ten, whatever business you bring in front of us is important. I don't want you to feel rushed at all.
You guys, you work hard, so I'm not gonna add any more than I have, so.
We've got an hour next.
In terms of Mike's participation, Mike, it'd be important to see if we can have any delineation or examples or precedent where one is different than the other for that particular section, dash three. If, if we're gonna be able to provide that, or I don't know, there's any, yeah, just, just to drive more clear definition.
I think along that same lines, I would, Mike, I'd ask you to, to touch base with Rick and actually have him pull up the specific special act regarding the conveyance restrictions, uh, from eleven.
I think the state superseded us.
Yeah, because that's, that's why, that's why we need to get, that's why we need to get that from him as far as that special, uh, special act conveyance and what the restrictions were and any statutory restrictions that come along with the special conveyance.
Yeah. All right, so with all that done, anybody else want to check, you're good?
Tony?
All good, all right.
Tony, you got something to say.
I have a few things to say, but I won't say them now.
Okay.
I'll say them later, I'll say them in the public.
Yes, um.
Uh, Jared, you're gonna create a motion to, Jared, ten oh eight, yeah.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, opposed, motion carries, have a good evening, thank you for.